Hello.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, September 12th, 2023, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present. Something wrong with my chair.
All right. That will work? You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. All right, public hearing, public hearing item number one.
In ordinance to declare the intention to obtain full ownership of property adjudicated to the city of Hammond located at 118 West Louisa Street under LSA RS 47-2236, authorizing the sale of the property to the adjoining landowner pursuant to LSA RS 47-2202 and providing for related matters, City Attorney Andre Coudrein.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This item involves a property that was under a tax sale deed to the city for unpaid taxes in 2002. It's a vacant lot. The address is 118 West Louisa Street. The city was approached by the next door neighbor, Mr. Alvin Carter, who was interested in acquiring the ownership of this vacant property, and he's been maintaining it for over one year. There's a state law that allows the city to sell the property to any adjoining landowner without a public bid if they've maintained the property for more than a year. We've verified that Mr. Carter has, in fact, maintained that property for more than a year. The property appraised for $3,700 a few years ago. The total unpaid taxes to the city are $11,177. There's grass liens from 1993 to 2018 are $5,500, so the total amount that would be due would be $16,692.24. Now, under the law, the city doesn't have to collect all of those taxes. They're authorized to sell it to the adjoining owner. So, there's been discussion with Mr. Carter about it. The thought is to sell it to him for $3,000 considering the market value of the property and the benefit that Mr. Carter provided by saving the city from having to cut the grass on this property. So, if it's approved, there's still a process for the tax debtor who lost the property at tax sale back in 2002 to redeem the property. But to redeem the property, they would have to pay the full $16,000 to do it. But there is, even if you approve this tonight, there's still a notification to the tax sale debtor with an opportunity to redeem it. And I've explained this to Mr. Carter. He is here, present in the council chambers for any question that you may have, but basically we're asking for authority to get the process going to be able to sell this property to Mr. Carter. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Anyone from the public have a question on this item? Anyone from the council? Thank you, Mr. Coudrein. Item number two.
In ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Tasha Demeron for the location of 307 North Oak Street, zoned RM-3, to allow the use of a real estate office. Expanded conditional use contingent on, one, this is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use, and it meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code. This property is in District Two. Lacy Landrum.
This was originally heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 10th. They unanimously recommended this expanded conditional use to be approved. There was one commissioner absent, but four commissioners voted for it unanimously. Next to this, to the north of this, it is zoned RM3. To the south, it is zoned RM3, but there is also a business working there that has been there for a long time. At this property specifically, there has been a business located there, and it was rezoned after that business located there. So, that's why we're looking at an expanded conditional use for this. To the west of it, the zoning is also RM3, and then to the east of it, across the street, is mixed commercial use. So, this does seem to fit within the character of where it's located, as you can see on the map that's also attached in your packet. The expanded conditional use would be limited just to this real estate office. It would also be limited to Ms. Demeron's owning the property. If it changed ownership or if she wished to do other uses to it, she would have to return to the city and return to the city council for permission to do so. She is here tonight. Do you have any questions about her use of the property?
Step to the night, Mike, excuse me, and give us your name and address, please.
Tasha Demeron, 408 West Robert.
Anyone have any questions for her on this item? Anyone from the public? Thank you. Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, September 12th, 2023, 5:30, 6 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
At this time, I'm going to ask Minister Newton to please come up and give us our prayer for the night.
Gracious and eternal Father, we thank you and we praise you once again for giving us the opportunity, Father of all, for waking us up this morning and protecting and providing for us throughout this day. We pray today, Father of all, that everything that we do for the season will be decent and in order, that your prayers will rest rule in the Bible on this hearing, Father of all, and that you will be glorified and your people glorified in Jesus' name. We pray, amen.
Before we move into our Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to take a moment of silence in honor of 9/11. Thank you. At this time for our Pledge of Allegiance, I ask that all veterans and active military please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda, could I get a motion to approve our August 22nd, 2023 meeting, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
At this time in our meeting, I'd like to make some presentations. The first presentation I would like to make is to our Daily Bread Food Bank of Tansco Hold, Mr. John Harris and his staff. And I want to ask my councilmembers to come.
On behalf of the United Standing House, script is written so that we can honor what honor is due, and we can honor those that are doing things inside of our community. So, on tonight, we'll read this here. It says, whereas our Daily Bread Food Bank of Tansco Hold has faithfully served the community of Tansco Hold since 1999, they have been a blessing to many parish residents and the communities in which we serve. Whereas our Daily Bread Food Bank was founded by local social workers and pastors that were committed to helping families in need. When they first started, they initially had thirty volunteers and was only able to serve ninety-nine families. They have grown and currently serve over three thousand families per month and are still growing. They do not only distribute food boxes, but they serve over fourteen hundred hot meals per month. Whereas the Hammond City Council is honored to celebrate and support their mission to alleviate hunger, alleviate hunger in our communities and making a initial impact by sharing kindness and compassion to those in need. Whereas District One of the City of Hammond and Hammond City Council recognizes the great leadership of their colleague, Bishop, of the Daily Bread Food Bank, Mr. John Harris, his staff and volunteers for their service to the community. Whereas our Daily Bread Food Bank of Tansco Hold is built around the scripture, "Raise gathered pieces that are left over. Let nothing be wasted." John, Chapter 6, verse 12. Now therefore, I give Andrew, Hammond City Council President, District One of the City of Hammond, due by recognizing John Harris and the staff and volunteers of our Daily Bread Food Bank of Tansco Hold of their many years of dedicated service, minisment to the needs of our community. I ask the city, the city council and the citizens of Hammond to now join me in celebrating their great recognition.
Anything you'd like to say?
Well, thanks everyone. I can thank the city, I can thank the mayor for his tremendous support and the ad over the years. We can't do it by ourselves. We have over a hundred volunteers who show up each month that have served faithfully to be able to get the food out, to help all the people that we get. It's amazing. We're sending out three thousand Tansco food boxes per month, between ten and fifteen thousand hot meals each month. There's nothing like giving a person a hot meal. I'm always, if you want to help somebody, you want to give them something they can eat now. Even though we do get a lot of commodities and food away, but my heart has always been able to give someone a hot meal, give them encouragement, freedom that they want us to, and to share the love of God with our community. And that recipe is a whole lot of help. It's been a tremendous blessing here, and we just thank you, the mayor, thank you, the council, and everyone in Hammond. Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we want to honor the young men in our community who have been approaching and being practical. Will the governor please come up with that quote?
Tyron. Certificate of recognition obtained by the President of Tyron, a better than outstanding achievement, a twelve-year-old one hundred meter national championship, two-time All American one hundred meters and two hundred meters, presented for September 12, 2023. Certificate of recognition obtained by the President of Tansco Hold, a man in ground and outstanding achievement, two-time All American one hundred and two hundred meters, presented for September 12, 2023.
Final adoption of ordinance, final adoption number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to declare the intention to obtain full ownership of the property, of property adjudicated to the city of Hammond located at 118 West Louisa Street under LSA RS 47.2236, authorizing the sale of the property to the adjoining landowner pursuant to LSA RS 47-2202 and providing for related matters, City Attorney Andre Coudrein.
I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council have any questions?
No, in District Three. Thank you, Mr. Andre, and thank you, Mr. Carter, also for maintaining that property for all those years. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else? If not, pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance, number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Tasha Demeron for the location of 307 North Oak Street, zoned RM-3, to allow the use of real estate office. Expanded conditional use contingent on, one, this is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use, and it meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code. Lacy Landrum.
Is there anyone else here on this item? Anyone from the council have any questions on this item? If not, pleasure the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Introduction of an ordinance, number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to extend and modify the moratorium on the acceptance and processing of subdivision plaits, site development plans, or zoning amendments for multifamily housing within the city of Hammond for an additional 180 days. Councilman Diveterio.
It is the extension of a current moratorium we have, you know, where we're making steps in the right direction of making some improvements during this time. Still, we have some, some work to be done, a lot of infrastructure improvements being made currently right now on sewer. Also, the Housing Committee is, you know, working right now throughout the year on different, different, different elements that'll help further development of these sizes to take place in the city of Hammond. Also, you know, we still look for a city planner, which is an important role for all of this. The UDC has some amendments that they're meeting about later on this month, from what I'm understanding. So, some discussion on some, some modification, improve the, the development of a lot of these large developments. So, yeah, I think there's a lot of work that's still to be done, and that's, that's where we're at right now.
All right. Anyone from the audience have a question, comment on this item? Anyone from the council?
Yeah, Councilman, I noticed you added a section in there for group homes, halfway homes, special homes, group living, et cetera.
Yeah, it was brought to my attention that they're high-density impacts of the city, and, and they were something that proper planning is very important when, when developing facilities like this in a city. There's a lot, there's a lot of preparation that comes into all of those. So, that, that was a mishap that, that definitely needs to, needs to be looked at.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that legally we can do that. Andre, can you talk about that?
So, I think if I'm, if I'm remembering right, the original moratorium allowed for variances, right, or allowed for exceptions, you could still come. So, I mean, Councilman Leon's right, there's a Fair Housing Act that could hypothetically come into play on some of these projects. So, if there is a project that might be worthy of special treatment because of federal law protection, that group should really submit a request for a variance or to have the moratorium not apply. So, that, that would be the option for those folks who may feel like they've got some rights under the Fair Housing Act to construct their property.
Okay. I just didn't want to vote on anything that, you know, was not within the parameters of the law.
And I don't want you to vote on anything that's not in the parameters of the law, but that's a good point, but that is, that would be my thought to those folks, to apply for the variance and have that come forward and would address it at that point.
Thank you, Andre.
And it seems like last time we included or excluded, was it duplexes and fourplexes? Is that correct?
It was five more, so up to fourplex was, was fine. It was just five plus, yeah.
And that's still, and that's still okay?
Yeah. No changes?
Anyone else? Pleasure of the council? I make a motion to approve. Second. I'm sorry to introduce.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Excuse me, Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
No.
Councilman Leon.
No.
Councilman Wells.
Yes.
Public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, September 26th.
Introduction of an ordinance, number two.
Introduction of an ordinance directing the clearing of right-ofways. Councilman Diveterio.
This was something that was, that was pretty devastating during Hurricane Ida. We had a lot of trees down everywhere, caused a lot of damage, a lot of, you know, delays of getting power restored to a lot of, a lot of families throughout the city. You know, so they really, it really needs to be focused on, on trying to get an organized system together for the right-ofways throughout the city of clearing trees and, and maintaining. This is more of a process that if, if you have a tree nearby, close to your house or whatnot, on a servitude, you can, there's a process now I'm proposing to actually, there's an organized way to, to get it on a list to get the tree cut and removed by the city, on a city servitude. So, and with that being said, it, it definitely should help, you know, any, any lines, you know, of power and everything. I mean, the trees are close to the road, seen some of them fall in the road. We had a tree storm, a storm, windstorm in District Four another day throughout Villa West and Old Ban Ridge Highway, and they had trees across the road, and a lot of them been in the communication lines and servitudes for a long time, and, and we just, we just need to do a good job of, of getting something on paper. A lot of people call me, they don't even know the process of even how to get anything done. So, this is something organizing, or proposing a way to get some improved organized services. Also, another, another fact, when I was looking at this, I also see a lot of communication lines down throughout the city. That's another thing I get constant, constant calls about through my district. I think we need to add something on the website to where there's a link on there to where if somebody has a down line, they can send it in to communication lines, send it in an address where we have a data log of those downed communication lines. And then the, the public commissioner, service commissioner, his, his contact needs to be very available in his office, so the people know who actually is, you know, pretty much is elected official who governs those utility companies, because they'll have a line down until it, you know, breaks service, you know, to a house. That's the only time they come in there, and they just wrap it up and try to get it out the way. So, a lot of those, those issues, they need to be cleaned up throughout the city, but this is just an organizing way right here for city servitudes. We got a, we got a big, you know, seventy, eighty thousand dollar stump grinder now the city has, so, you know, we shouldn't have any issues of getting those stumps ground, get them out the way, and actually put it to use for city servitude. So, that, that's, that's where all this is at, so, thank you.
The, I like, I love the ideas of, you know, having a designated email and a way to facilitate and even having a list for requests. I've run in a couple of times, probably a handful of times, of people in my district who want trees removed because of, they, they feel like it's a threat to their house or whatnot. And the process has been fairly easy, in my opinion, at least in my experience, where we make the request, at least twice of those requests, the people wanted a tree down, but it was a healthy tree, it was a good tree, there was literally no reason to take it down. So, their request was denied. And the way that this is worded is that the city shall remove any and all trees when requested by the property owner or adjacent property owner. And my first thought goes to Church Street, West Church Street. We have a beautiful canopy in the city of Hammond, and some of those, you know, magnificent live oaks are, you know, encroaching on the city's right-ofway, but there's nothing wrong with those trees. You know, perhaps we should be trimming them more and making sure that, you know, weak branches and, and things like that are not falling in the streets, but this is way over broad, in my opinion, and if, so my father-in-law has a house on Church Street, he has a beautiful oak tree that's in the right-ofway. If he wanted, and he's a tree cutter, if he said, "I don't want this tree anymore, I'm tired of it," and he asked the city, and we passed this, the city shall remove it. People would lose their minds, and rightfully so, because we have beautiful trees and we should be protecting the greens, the, you know, the green canopy of our city, in my opinion. So, I, I think this needs work. I love the idea, again, of trying to help people understand the process, finding a way to get on a list, being able to check in on what's going on with the list, but we need to leave the decision-making of whether a tree needs to come down to someone who is qualified to know whether a tree should be who is qualified to know whether a tree should be taken down or should not be taken down.
I appreciate your input, but a live oak tree is a protected tree throughout the city, there's an ordinance on there, so that tree would not even pertain, the ordinance would oversee, it's a protection.
It doesn't say that.
Live oaks are protected in the city. I'll let you talk, Carly.
It doesn't say that.
Can I finish talking? I think, did I interrupt you?
No, but it doesn't say that.
Can you hold up for a second? Do you mind?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The live oak tree is a protected tree throughout the city, there's an ordinance on there, that wouldn't be able to be taken down anyway. And this is an introduction, so you start introducing something. And there may be something else that somebody, very smart person in this audience, may think of something that may want to add or modify, and something I wouldn't even thought about. But it's not going to get done without being introduced, because this has been like this forever, and there's nothing on paper. You call them glad in your district, Carly, you call them, get them taken down. District Four, we don't do that all the time, and that's fine. I don't care, I'm not going to sit there arguing who gets better service, but there's nothing on paper and writing about the process, and the people need an easy way to be able to do it. I don't want to get a call, a hundred calls by trees, they don't want to call, the people don't want to call me a hundred times. They want to be efficient, easy, clean way, as a record, and get in line. You can't take them all now, but if they know their ticket number is a hundred, whatever, it might take six months, a year, but they know what's going on, and communication and transparency is there, and it would eliminate the calls I get that the city's taking down trees on private property and all that. It'd be a system, it'd be put in place, and they wouldn't have any argument, any kind of issues there. So, yes, the live oak tree, of course, nobody would cut down a live oak tree if it's protected. And so, therefore, that would oversee. And Andre, I may ask you, if that went in place, would the protection on a live oak tree, since it's already recorded ordinance in the city of Hammond, would oversee that, and that would be?
Well...
We could also add that into it, but I'm just saying that that was never, this here was a point being made, that was already protection, so it would have came up anyway.
I think you can fine-tune it, but you would say that this is the last expression of a legislative will.
Yeah.
So, typically, you might have language that talks about how this applies to existing ordinances, so that might be something to think about, just so it's clear.
Yeah.
That it wouldn't apply to any other ordinances dealing with trees. That might be an idea.
It's an introduction, so therefore, we can modify it and get a lot of input from the public.
Yeah, and I've got some input too I can give to you.
Yeah.
Offline, on message.
Absolutely.
Because I do think it's not a bad idea to have a ordinance that authorizes the mayor. I will tell you, just what worries me is words like "shall," "any and all," "any public right-ofway," "when requested." So, we may fine-tune that, but I think we can work on that.
Yeah.
When it comes time.
Thank you.
Some of the things that I think we need to consider is that this would require an amendment to our current stormwater plan, as approved by DEQ, because they do not encourage the cutting down of mature, healthy trees. So, this would definitely be something we'd have to amend and get approved in that direction. It may also impact our Tree City status, which we've had for well over twenty-five, almost thirty years. It would probably close the door for our Arbor Day funding, which is the trees that we're able to give out to our citizens, so that they can put them in their own yards. It would also close the door on any funding from CN and the American Bloom Grant, because it goes against the tenants, again, of environmentalism and of maintaining the healthy tree canopy. The other things that I have concerns about is, in the ordinance, it does have that language about "shall," and it also says that "when requested by the property owner or the adjacent property owner." So, I would want a clearer definition of what adjacent means. When we consider that in planning and zoning terms, we consider that the full circle around the property in question. So, if somebody, like Ms. Dameron tonight, is seeking to change the property, we notify all the properties that are adjacent to that, and that may be across the street, that may be diagonal from it, or that may share the backyard to it. So, it's not just the next-door neighbors. So, I would want some clarification there. I would also want to know if homeowners associations would have feedback on this. And then, I would want to know what process we would use if perhaps a property owner and an adjacent property owner disagreed about the tree. One may think it should come down, and the other may think it should remain. So, how would we mitigate that challenge?
Well, I appreciate all your opposition and all your good points you tried to make on this ordinance here that's introduced. But at the end of the day, I'm an elected official, I don't work for the city, but public safety in my eyes comes first, whenever I'm, that's what I'm here for. So, whenever I have a tree, for instance, example of two, it's, you know, it's probably an accident there about every two or three days on the corner of Linden and Morris Street, and there's two big pine trees. It actually was holding up another large pine tree across the Linden, probably one of the last largest dangerous trees removed from the city of Hammond. And people drive underneath that tree, and they didn't even have a cross, they didn't even have a barricade put in front of it after the hurricane for people not to drive and park their cars underneath the tree. So, if it just so happened to fall and kill somebody, that is a dangerous deal. We have to be more attentive and put a priority on some of these servitudes and these trees growing on the servitudes, not cutting them out of people's yard, not trying to ban trees from the city of Hammond. Let's not run away and try to exaggerate what we're trying, what I'm trying to propose, to clean up and protect the city of Hammond residents that have trees in areas, communication lines, if somebody's sick and ill, there's a tree there, just because it's healthy, but it's very close to the line or it's growing, and somebody wants to remove those servitude, I think the city, I mean, I've had an outpour of concern about this, and I'm trying to prepare, plan ahead, moving forward, and not cutting down live oak trees that are protected, but trees and servitudes that are requested. And we need to organize a plan for that moving forward, and this is a starting point introductory. So, that's just, that's kind of where it's at on this introduction. And so, I'm, you know, more than happy to fine-tune it, improve it, any input. But if it wasn't introduced, it's never going to get better, so.
I'll just add that I am an elected official, and I echo the things that Dr. Landrum said. You know, all of these things need to be considered, need to be a factor. And let me tell you, you start cutting trees, you start cutting healthy trees down, you're going to have a riot on your hand. You know, there's so many, so many reasons not to just be able to say, "I want this nice tree that's not hurting anything, cut down." Now, if there's a tree that's in danger or creating a safety hazard, and I think we already do that.
We cut down nuisance trees.
Yeah.
But that may be a way to add a definition of a nuisance tree in here, to think about that. Again, the concern is, like in downtown, who, if a property owner or an adjacent property owner says, "I don't want that tree."
Right.
What do we do? We've used probably downtown funding to plant a lot of those trees in downtown.
I agree with needing a process. That's, I have no problem with that. I just think there's a lot of work that needs to be done on this, that's all.
Sal Nicolosi, thirty-six oh seven, Highway one ninety west, Hammond, Louisiana. Councilman Divitor is not talking about cutting trees down. What he's talking about is right-ofway, the city's right-ofway. So, I'm under the impression that the right-ofways are not being taken care of. And me, as a citizen, I had to call a few times in the subdivisions that I'm, you know, around, which is in his, happened to be in this district. And, you know, nobody was even cutting the grass, much less, I even told them that, you know, the tree limbs was in the right-ofway, but the grass was like four, five feet tall. And when I called the city, I told them about it, and I said, "Be careful, because they got tree limbs down there." So, he's not talking about cutting down trees. We're talking about in right-ofways. Now, in the city of Hammond, you don't have that problem. But in the outskirts, which is outskirts of Hammond, which is still, I pay city taxes, and we still having that problem, not only from the storms, but also from just the wind. But if the right-ofways have got three or four feet grass, well, you know, who's going to take care of it? Who's supposed to take care of it? The city. From what I'm understanding, we're getting more equipment. I think we got one with a blade on it or something that was able to cut, you know, cut down the side of the roads, and that's on Highway one ninety for years. They haven't done it. I had to go bush-haul my own. And why should I pay taxes to the city when I have to go bush-haul these properties, and it's the right-ofways to the city? So, what he's indicating, we need to start now and introduce this, he's introducing it, to get an approval, that's all. We're not cutting trees. All we're doing is limbs are falling, if a tree limb falls across, you know, that's it. So, they all got to consider that. Do your job. Thank you.
Christine Monastery, two zero eight Camellia Avenue. I have a few questions. I'm under the impression that you could call the city and have ditches dug, limbs cut, grass cut, and they put in a work order and send somebody out. I have done that in the past, and sometimes it occurred, and sometimes it didn't. Nine times out of ten, it occurred when I contacted Mr. Lamar or Sam. Secondly, on the corner of Celia and Azelia, that property was to sell for many, many, many years. It was recently purchased by a couple in Punchetula, Cofield, Copel, something like that. Anyway, long story short, I instantly called my councilman when the city was out there cutting healthy trees, that's correct, healthy trees off the servitude and digging the ditch, and then graciously and politely left. The rest of the ditch is down Celia, Azelia, and Camellia, full of dirt, debris, and whatever else. So, something needs to happen, and so I appreciate the introduction to that. But the city has no problem in cutting down healthy trees, ever. I've witnessed it.
Appreciate it. I mean, that's what in District Four, we deal with a lot, and maybe District Two's different, but I'm talking about what we're and the people that we deal with. It's the same stuff, and it's the ditches and everything, no organization with that. Intersections, accidents all the time, there's bushes, growth, growing into stop signs. I mean, there's need a process of a city worker to drive through these intersections, see if it's in the cumberance of eyesight for public safety. Drive through the city, it's like that all the time. I shouldn't, the city shouldn't have to call all the time, the residents, the city council shouldn't have to call all the time. We pay city, street department workers, managers to go through there. They need to look at the public safety when they stop at a stop sign. If the growth is into the stops, into the road, don't just drive by, make a report to get it trimmed and get it cut down. And I'm speaking for the complaints that come in through my district and where I'm at, and it shouldn't have to be, it should be a schedule. Go drive, go check out the intersections for public safety. So, it's a lot, so.
Thank you. Mr. David, can you come up and tell them about the tree? Please.
I wasn't expecting this. Good evening.
Name and address, please.
David Foster. I'm going to give you my city address, one twenty-seven Washington Avenue. I have a tree right down the corner of Washington and Stanley. It's not live, it's rotten. And I talked to Councilman Webb about it. I said, "Can you please get it down?" And he said it's going to take care of it. I'm not the type to keep asking. I have a change, so I'll get it down myself, because it's a safety hazard. If you look around, you have healthy trees falling. Look at New Orleans right now. Everybody watch the news, right? They got trees falling on people, and they're live. They just inspected them and said they was good. So, I like what Sam is, he being proactive about it. We all need to be proactive. We sitting here, what we showing to the public is, we're not agreeing for public safety. I barely come here, I watch it online all the time. I could tell these guys, I sit here and I look at y'all, you represent us. I expect you to be more presentable. Do your job. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for nothing more. I'm the guy that's building all these new houses in what you call the hood. And if anybody walk in my houses, you'll think you're in Disneyland somewhere. The mayor, you've been there, you know what I'm putting into the city. I'm not asking for no handouts. I want to move my people forward, whatever it takes to get the job done. Like I said, if somebody need a tree cut, I'll take care of it, no problem. But I'm not going to sit there and go back and forth saying who's going to pay for a tree. If it's somebody's sake, if they want it down, get it down. We shouldn't have to go back and forth. But y'all are going to hear me much more tonight, because I'm sick of everything that's going on around here. Things need to change, and it starts today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David. I'm glad Mr. David said that. He in District Three, on White Street on Washington Avenue. Ms. Lisa, I sent you an email about a tree, and the tree is falling every day. It's a tree that should have been cut. It ain't just got on the list yesterday. And Ms. Gonzalez, she right. I had an issue with somebody in my district needed a tree cut. Robert Morgan came out there and did some steps off. Robert Williams come out there and did some step off, said the tree belongs to the landowner. But guess what? Ms. Gonzalez right. In my district, which is one of her clients, she called and got the tree cut. Yeah, in my district, I can't make that phone call and get a tree cut. That same tree Mr. David talking about, it's a hazard. Tree been dead, it ain't just died yesterday. On White Street, all the limbs on side of the road that the community is picking up and putting on side of the road, right by the sidewalk, guess what? Been like that, that little windstorm we had, every time the wind blow, it's knocking limbs down out the tree. So, Ms. Gonzalez is right. She can easy call and get it cut in my district. So, you know what I have to do? I got to call Ms. Gonzalez to get stuff cut in my district, because I can't get it cut. Yeah, so she right. And that man ain't talking about no healthy trees. That man talking about trees that's a hazard, because guess what? That little storm hit the other day in District Three, we had trees that fall, good trees, not no bad tree. People had lights out, we had lights out. You know what? I should have called Ms. Gonzalez, because she can get the job done in District Three. Look like I can't get trees cut in District Three. But if I called Ms. Gonzalez, I guarantee they'll cut the tree. Yeah, she telling the truth. And you know what? We all need that same service. It's a hazard, and we tired of it. I shouldn't have to call, I shouldn't have to send Ms. Lisa, no, three emails to see when they're going to do the tree. I shouldn't have to do that. One email. Mr. Sal, right? We sit up here, stump grinder, anything the city asks for, thousand, thousand of you all's dollar, taxpayers' dollars, we vote on it. But guess what? I'm yet to see the stump grinder. Yeah, I'm lying, I did see the stump grinder in my community. The number two man worked for the city, they cut his trees down when his wife died and grind all the stumps. I didn't even know trees were there no more. So, he right. That's the only time I saw the stump grinder, don't see it no more. So, you know what? Yeah, it's something that need to be introduced. Yeah, take some of the language out, and it's something that need to be passed, because you know what? We in District Three don't have the money. And Mr. David, that's not your job to go and cut trees because people call. We got city workers that making hundreds and thousands of taxpayers' dollars. That's their job to cut the trees. And if they can't cut the trees, hire a contractor, because we hire contractors all the time, with a bid, without a bid. You ain't going to even know nothing about it. Just like she said, over in her district, in the canal, the drainage, I thought they was lying. I had to pass over there myself to see, cutting a tree down in the drainage, in the canal. And not only did they cut it down, moved all the debris, brought sand, put it in the yard. I say, "Damn, I didn't even know a truck been in the yard." Yeah, the truck made roots. But when it got through, the landowner can cut his grass with no problem at all, ain't got to worry about no stick or nothing hitting his kids or hitting him in the face. gotta worry about no stick or nothing hitting his kids or hitting him in the face. Thank you, Mr. Sam, for even bringing this up.
Thank you. You're welcome. And that's why we need some kind of process that's on paper, sort of favoritism and the picking and choosing and everything else, who they gonna cut and not. Needs to be on paper. Needs to be organized, and be right, it needs to be in black and white. And, you know, and another thing that is just getting old is that when somebody calls in, as a resident calls in and says something about a tree or anything else that's in a servitude or right of way, but it's, oh, it's not in the city, it's the state or whatnot. Well, go, that should be a policy to go contact, send in mail. You don't just tell the city taxpayer, oh, it's not mine. Like, you go figure it out. Go call, go notify, send an email. They should take care of it, send an email, send it over to them. And that's how that should be taking place as well. There need be something on that. And then canal drainage, brought that up. There's a tree that fell in a canal servitude on Villa West and Route St. Martin, it's in the middle of the servitude, the middle of the canal ditch. Call in, oh, it's not in our, that's not, we don't do that. Well, somebody's gotta get the tree out of the canal drainage. It drains properties, not just a homeowner, it's a massive hazard. So it should be something that we should have administrative wise. If it's not, somebody needs to figure out who needs to be contacted to get the tree out of the canal for drainage passage. So it's all kind of stuff like that, every day, every day. Twenty calls about things that should already have something organized on paper or somebody that cares and to get it done.
Ms. Lisa, do the air conditioning work in here? Yeah, 'cause it's, you know what? It's the third, it's the third time I done come to a council meeting. Real stuff. If y'all don't want nobody in here, cut the heater on and tell nobody don't come. It's hot in here. It's the third meeting, and I'm asking you because I see you be looking at the thermostat. So if the air conditioning broke, I know we got a generator, get the generator to work. It's hot. It's the third meeting that I done been to that the air conditioning not working. Y'all know it's a problem? No, I'm asking you because I see you by the thermostat, but if it's broke, the administration, they need to know. So.
When I came in today to set up for the meeting, it was very, very cold in here and it's working. I very, very bad, I checked soon. What happens when we come over here, I don't know. So when I came in here at 2:00 AM today, it worked.
Can we get it, can we get a serviceman, AC guy scheduled to come out? I mean, is that allowed?
That's fine.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what it's registered as right now. I'm not.
Seventy-seven.
Seven degrees in here. Maybe it's Bree on or something. It's just not blowing.
Lisa, can you, can you put that on the list tomorrow, maybe to send out somebody to get the council chambers AC to checked? Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on this item?
I make, I make a motion to.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I mean, as it's written, I think it needs to clarify again. I'm fine with damaged trees and trees that are deemed to be a hazard, nuisance trees if we want to define that, but it's not, nothing is defining or, or saying, giving any discretion or determining whether, and maybe it's not a live oak, but it's a lovely 100-year-old magnolia tree that's perfectly healthy. We, we're not saying anything that is, you know, define anything. Downtown is a good point Lacey brings up. We have trees on the right of way up and down West Thomas Street. If one of those property owners want it out, this says we gotta do it.
It's an introduction, and introductions, they can be amended, they can be added to before the next meeting. It's an introduction to introduce, and amendments and changes can be made. If you have some concerns or some issues, you can email them in. You can, you could do however communication you want to do about your input on this ordinance that's been introduced. It's introduced on the table, it's not being approved tonight, it's being introduced. So there's some great points from the audience that made out, made some, some issues, you know, if it's, if we, if we need to make sure, Andre, I'm sure I could talk with him a little bit on it, and I'm sure if he thinks some things on, need to be written in there about live oak ordinance that's already on books, need to be added in on there and clarity and other details. I mean, I'm, I'm open to look at things, but I know what I am here for, and that is improve the system that is not working right now. And this is introduction of some, of an ordinance that is going to move in the right direction of planning to get things done correctly from here on out. So it's an introduction, there's changes. Hey, I ask all y'all to send an email change, send it in there, any kind of modifications, and I could, sure I can meet with Andre at some point in time, or call him in between now and then, and we can make some amendments, and there may be some amendments made when, if it even gets approved or before it gets approved. So, you know, it's up for vote for introduction.
My only point is an ordinance is being to introduce, is published, so people can read it. And right now, we've identified a couple of things. We may even have some consensus on some things that could, may or may not need to be changed. If you introduce it as is, we're gonna have a meeting where everyone comes in and says the same things. If we know there's a certain issues, fix it and then publish it with those changes, especially if Andre has things that he suggests are changed. That's the point of an introduction, is to put it on the link so that people can see what it looks like, not how it's gonna change in the next meeting.
It, it's an introduction of ordinance that they'll have a public input.
Yeah, there's.
Next, next time, and there may be some public input next meeting, that something else comes up, and it may have to get tabled, it may need to get reworked. You can amend it anytime. We introduce all the time and change things all the time. Am I not right, Andre?
Sure, and I didn't, didn't prepare this ordinance. I'm not being critical of the ordinance, but there are some things that were, that I've noticed that were brought out tonight that I think we can fine tune it to meet the intentions of what's gonna be done. So I think it's a process, like we've done on several things, it's a process, we can work on it, make the changes. I'm happy to propose my suggested changes to it and send that out, and something to think about for the, when it comes up for the next meeting, if it's, if it's introduced.
Andre, would it make more sense to, to table it and get all of these changes and the input that we had just from tonight, which was quite a lot, and then reintroduce it as a, and then reintroduce it?
That's up to the council.
Everybody has their own opinion.
Well, this is what I always hear all the time. It's just introduction. I hear this all the time. It's just introduction. So it's just being introduced. That's all it is. Anyone else? All right. I make a motion, introduce.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
No.
Councilman Leon?
No.
Councilman Wells?
Aye, but what we gonna, this what we gonna do. We're not gonna keep voting like this. We finna switch this up. You can't keep calling me last. We got to switch it up. I wasn't gonna say nothing, but you know what? It's going on too long. We got to switch it up.
Well, let me just say, no disrespect, I did this, I do this in alphabetical order. So I can change it any way you guys suggest it, but I didn't do it in any particular order for any particular reason. I did it alphabetically. So if you want me to switch it up every week, I can do that.
Please.
But I'm saying, I do it alphabetically.
Yeah, I think it needs to be consistent. We can just do by council, district, one, two, three, four, and five.
No, 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 no. You got to switch it up. We know what's going on. We got one don't know how to vote.
Well, who?
'Cause they gonna follow behind. So no, we, no, we always had it switched up. It ain't never been like this at every meeting. And so what's going on now? They don't know how to vote until they hear something. So we got to switch it up. It's no more than right. You know darn well that they don't keep doing the same thing over and over again. Call me first. I'll vote first, but we can't keep doing it like that. It got to be switched up. Alphabetical order. Ms. Lisa, there's nothing against you. It's nothing. Don't take it personal, but it have to be switched up. We can't keep voting like this every time. That's where everybody gonna have to start going home, reading their notes, and learning how to vote. Ma'am, if you got something to say, say it on the mic, 'cause it's been recorded.
I thought as elected officials, you were reading your packets and then voting based on.
Everybody don't read their package, you know that. Y'all tell them how to vote. Yeah, I'm glad you said that.
I don't call anybody in.
Yeah, y'all tell them how to vote. That's how they know what to do. They know what's on the agenda, 'fore I know what's on the agenda.
That's wrong. That's not true.
Who do you call, Ms. Carley, to get trees cut so that Devon and Sam can follow suit? What's the procedure?
Well, it was Robert Williams, and then it was Robert, I'm sorry, it was Robert Morgan.
They don't respond to y'all? Robert Williams doesn't respond to y'all?
They come and walk the thing. They come walk it off for me and tell me they can't get it done. But the same thing, they walk it off for me when Ms. Gonzalez called for my district to get cut.
Now, what they do, what they do is, no, even better, what they do is, a dying tree that had died limb, they go cut the dead limbs off of it, so now it really makes it weak, so we're not following somebody. That's what they do. They go cut something on a servitude, they try to make an excuse, I said it wasn't on that servitude, it's on a CNN servitude, we'll call CNN and get the tree down. Don't go cut the dead limbs and let the tree fall dead and follow on somebody. Now you made it weaker. Don't touch it off, it's not on yours.
We got that clarified as a vote, 'cause they don't have that.
Going to run around for six months on one tree.
I got you. I see you. I got you.
Public hearing date?
September 26th at 5:30 PM.
All right. New business. Resolution number one.
A resolution to approve Holy Ghost to hold its annual parish fair on October 27th, 28th, 29th, 2023, within the boundaries of Magnolia Street from West Colorado to railroad track and Northwest Railroad Avenue from West Colorado to railroad track, Holly Wooton, Holly Wooton, 601 North Oak Street. So we're looking for a resolution to hold our annual parish fair. Also, a resolution for us to sell alcohol, and a resolution for us to, to make, obtain a waiver for an open container.
Anyone else here on this item from the public? Any question from anyone on the council? Pleasure to counsel. I make a motion to approve.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews?
Aye. Resolution number two?
A resolution authorizing Holy Ghost Parish Fair Committee to sell, serve, or otherwise handle alcohol on Friday, October 27th, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Saturday, October 28th, 2023, from 8:00 to 10:00 PM. And Sunday, October 29th, 2023, from 10:00 to 6:00 PM, within the boundary set, Holly Wooton.
Same as above.
Same.
Same.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Anybody from the public on this item? Anyone from the council have any questions or concerns? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number three?
A resolution authorizing Holy Ghost Parish Fair Committee to obtain a waiver of the open container law for the following dates and times. Friday, October 27th, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Saturday, October 28th, 2023, from 8:00 to 10:00 PM. And Sunday, October 29th, 2023, from 10:00 to 6:00 PM, within the boundary set, Holly.
Same as above.
Same as.
All right. Anyone from the public? All right. Anyone from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve.
Oh, thank you.
We'll make the motions.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye. Resolution number four?
A resolution authorizing La Corada, located at 108 Northwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, to obtain a waiver of the open container law for their 25th anniversary celebration on Friday, September 15th, 2023, from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM, in the closed area of West Charles Street in front of the restaurant and in the south of the Casa de Frusta parking lot. Kay, Kylie Payne?
Yes, Kaylee Payne, 108 Northwest Railroad Avenue. And this is just for our 25th anniversary party. We'll be having live music all day. Just to, we'll have that stage out there, just to keep traffic out of that one area right in front of our restaurant and keep things flowing, so.
Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure to the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye. Resolution number five?
A resolution to approve the mayor to enter into a contract with Arco Company Services for preventative generator maintenance and repair services. Total annual preventative maintenance amount of $65,560, and repair services hourly rate of $119 RFP 24-14. Janice Swallow?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The current contract that we have for generator maintenance has come to an end. We done renewed it twice, so we had to read up, rebid out. Just to give you a little bit of background on how we started this and what we do. In 2009, we started actually building, bidding out the generator preventive maintenance. And every year after the end of the contract, you know, we meet and describe, you know, discuss what needs to be added or what we thought was deficiencies in the contract, and we add one. So this is the fifth time that we have actually bid this contract out, and before we submit the proposal, we met and we come up with some conclusions that we needed to add more preventative minor maintenances, 'cause we only have one annually. So the cost is gonna be higher on the front end. Hopefully, we're going to decrease the ending effect of the annual cost. So what we did was we added three preventative maintenance minors, and we have one major. And we changed up the request for proposals. So we basically put out our requirements, what the city is requiring the proposal to have. And we gave the proposers the option to submit what they thought they could best provide the city. So it's kind of like a job interview, who can best provide the experience, the personnel, the cost, everything for the city. So after reviewing all the proposals, Arco was the only one that actually completed the RFP process 100% with all the requirements. They had the overall lowest cost when you come down to repair services and annual preventative cost when you come down to repair services and annual preventative maintenance. So we're just asking the city's permission to proceed with the contract.
Okay. Anyone from the public on this item?
Jan, is this within budget? Is the proposal within whatever was budgeted or Lacy?
I don't know what was budgeted for the annual.
It's not outrageously outside of what is.
It's not. Actually, I looked at the numbers and it looks like annually we're spending like a hundred and thirty thousand. I'll tell you, our last year figures was, because we only did one preventative maintenance, was twenty-seven thousand. And we had repair services that came in for the cost of the rest. We did buy two generators out of that. So I think overall that may have been forty-seven thousand, fifty thousand, and the rest was repair services.
Back again. David Foster, four five three three one Pine Hill Road, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one. I have some problems with that. I didn't realize that that was gonna come up to this meeting today. I did submit that bid in. It changed from last time. And I got proof to show you. The slow evaluation system they use is unfair. I want to know who make the changes on the bidding process of these jobs. Because I want to show you the one from twenty to where this was something for minorities. This form was actually in the package last time for minorities, right? It's no longer in the new package there.
Can I see that form?
Yes. And I want to show you the package. Another thing that's disturbing is I was present at the package opening, okay? I didn't like, I didn't like what I see. Because the last time, when this thing was issued, they knew exactly who to award the bid to immediately that day. This time, I didn't even get none of that tabulation. That wasn't even emailed to me. And if you look at that evaluation score, how can you base that score on a new contract? To me, I'm a young business, I'm a young business that just started. I can't compete with Arco. Arco is a big corporation, okay? It's not fair to me. And I know doggone well that Arco didn't come in with sixty-five thousand dollars. But there's no way that I could confirm that because I couldn't see the raw data. She never did. All she did was open up the envelope. Everything else is just kept, she just kept it closed. Now, I'm gonna show you the last time, this particular bid, and I went got it because I know, and it's got, if you look at the language, and I don't want to sit here and hold this all day long, you could tell that this was derived to give to Arco. It had specifications saying that even if Arco bid was higher, it didn't matter. That last column on the right side determined, hey, the city have reserved that right. We can go with the next to the highest bidder. And I'm gonna show you that in this form right here. I want to know who authorized to make these changes like that. And that's what I'm trying to, just bear with me for a minute. I'm gonna show you. This is the rate sheet from last time. Why do we have to go to this point system? We, right there and there, we knew all the numbers of who had what that day. I didn't know about it till just now. I didn't receive that tabulations, okay? So what is it like a phone call to call Arco, hey, look, I got a guy coming at seventy-five thousand dollars, okay? And if you could pull up the RFP, I'm about to tell you the page right here. In the new, if you look at the new RFP, I got a copy of the new one right here. I want you to see. Oh, we're not gonna open the bids up on this one. We're gonna call and let you know. Now, one time she called me and told me about this tabulation. This is my first time seeing it on the screen. But I want to show you better than I could tell you. Because if you go through this package, and I made two copies, I paid thirteen dollars and fifty cents for public records. And that's absurd. But if you go through these packages right here, that's the new packages right here, okay? Now, what the thing is, I have to wait. We gotta set up this special committee. Actually, who's this special committee? Because I want to know who was involved with it, okay? Who is the special committee that's gonna sit there and call all these references? They want to know a background check. They want to know my financial statement. How much money I make? What's that's gotta do with, if you look at the contract, it's a thirty thousand dollar contract. I see the city give people jobs. You need to know how many people I'm gonna have. Their resume. You need to read my resume. That's unacceptable. And I'm about to show you the page where it says, the city have that right. If the bid coming high, they got the right to choose the next highest bidder. Next, not the lowest, but the next highest bidder. And I found that's kind of disturbing. If you look at the yearly maintenance, I was the lowest. And also, if you look in the package, it says that the city, they could either delete those extra additional services. So with that being said, why don't we just base it on the maintenance package, the first column? Why we gotta go through all these other columns to come up? We didn't do that last time. Why are we doing it now? And I'm not, I'm not complaining. I want the best person to win. I'm for being fair. But also, any contract that's over ten thousand dollars need to go through a process. We don't need to take the easy way out and just say, look, hey, I know this person. I'm gonna go get three bids from somebody. What about all the other small minority business that's here? I just got an email last Friday to go look at a job at the airport. The lady told me, you got seventy-two hours. And I could forward the email to everybody here to give me a proposal. I think pride roofing went and looked at the same job too. We got, he got the same email. He was on that email. But three other people had a chance to look at it already. But she gonna give me seventy-two hours? I gotta go price windows? I gotta go get a pride roofing because I'm gonna get this guy here that could probably do my gutters, the work that's on that job. Small minority business that's in the neighborhood that's doing good things for the neighborhood. Who is Arco? Arco's a big corporation with plenty money. But I'm very disturbed because all she did was open the main envelope up. She didn't let me see any tabulations, okay? Because I know Arco is not gonna do that job. Big as that corporation is, they're not gonna come here and do it for no seventy-five thou, no sixty-five thousand dollars. I know that for a fact. If you look at, I went, I went below their cost from three years ago. And you mean to tell me that you added four more generators and you still gonna beat that cost? You serious about that? You think I born yesterday? But if you look at every, I want y'all to study that list of, study that and study this. I'm gonna give you what I paid thirteen dollars and fifty cents for. I want you to compare the two. I want you to compare the two. And you can see the unfairness in here. Something needs to be done. Anything that's over ten thousand dollars, we don't need to send emails out to these different people like Harper Metal Buildings, all these other people. Every, I want to look at, what I need to do is, I need to look at all the contracts that's been issued within the last six months. Because if you look at the city website, which we pay all this money for, to advertise everything, the one that we talked about, let's put it to work. I look at it every day. If you don't believe me, go check it. You see me look at that every day, and I guarantee the little job that we talking about right now, it's not even on there. Something need to be done. Jefferson Parish, if it wouldn't be for Jefferson Parish, guess what? My family wouldn't even be making it. Because Jefferson Parish played by the road. Anything over ten thousand dollars, they needed five generators for me to go install. They said, look, we're gonna put it out for bid on central bid. And I know she knew about central bidding. Matter of fact, I just got a PO today from Jefferson Parish. They put it out there, ten thousand dollars above. They said, look, hey, we're gonna make you bid on. And they send you the tabulation. I'll show you, I'm gonna email it to you guys. Who all competed? Who all's rejected? And everything. It's up front. It's straight out in the opening. Do I trust Jana? No. Because at the end of the day, you got people out there trying to make a living. You got people, I pay workman comp insurance just like everybody else. And all I ask you to do is be fair. We don't need to be behind closed doors, me, you, and your assistant up there for the opening. I want to see numbers. And if you look at that, in twenty, we seen numbers that very same day. Till yet, I didn't see numbers until just now. And if you go look at that breakdown, you'll see everyone. Look at the breakdown, you'll see exactly what I'm, mine's typed in nice and pretty, you know? Look at that. Just look at the numbers. That's all I ask.
I sideways, I can't.
Yeah, they got it sideways. Look at the numbers.
Yeah, can we get it straight, please?
Yep. Mine, I can tell you, mine's like five hundred dollars. That old point system, I think the last time I seen that point system, I'm gonna show you how much I'm engaged in this system. I could tell you everything what's going on in Hammond. I could tell you who all own one piece of property and what. And I could tell you who not paying the taxes. I could tell you who ain't been paying taxes for twenty-something years and nobody didn't say nothing to them. But guess what? Any other people mispaying their taxes, guess what? We want to put their property up and take it from them. But I'm not here for all that. I'm not worried about the past. We're gonna fix this going forward. I want to make sure that anything over ten thousand dollars, it goes out for a bid. We don't need to sit behind these rooms and say, oh, I know this person. Send it off a bid. Put it on central bidding. You need help putting on central bidding, I'll show you. You already know, tangible is using it all the time. They use it. Why are we not using it? Okay? Make it fair for everybody around the board. I live in Hammond. I spent a lot of money in Hammond. I done put over a million dollars right there in District Three.
Yes.
He could tell you. And it wasn't from a bank. I got two denials from a bank. My credit is perfect, okay? And I'm gonna tell you, Ms. Carroll, I want to tell you something. I want to tell you something from last time. But I kind of like, Ms. Carroll, you got to understand where I'm coming from. You know, we've been, we've been held back for so long. And you got to understand my frustration. You know, I was on my job before I even quit my job and started building houses in the neighborhood. I was teaching somebody like me how to plan a job. I was a planner for, planner, that's why I know all this stuff. City planner, what you asking about? I'm good at that. I was teaching a fellow brother like me on my lunch break how to plan. My manager walked in and asked me, told me, what are y'all planning on stealing? How you think that make me feel? From that point, I didn't see that job anymore like I used to. We been through so much. That's why I do so much. Because you don't understand. It's hard. Every day I go build, I was in the house today building it. Don't know how I'm gonna finish it. But the man up above helped me. I can't just go walk in the bank and say, give me this money. I can't go ask my mom, my dad, they're no longer here, my family, because you got what you call jealousy. It's within. But I'm gonna tell you like this. I believe in fairness. I believe in honesty. And we gotta do something different. The point system, that wasn't on last time. How you know what I could do? That evaluation score, how you gonna evaluate me? And then another thing. Jana, did you call any one of those references? And tell me the truth.
The city of Hammond itself has a reference as they've been our contractor for the last three years. And yes, sir, since they will be being a contractor, and yes, we have checked their references.
I'm not, I'm telling, did you check my references to grade the scale right here?
You don't have references. You did not provide references. The references that you have were not within the last four years. Look at your package.
Here you go, right there. See, she got everything to defend these people. And this is what I'm trying to tell you. Now, these are the references that I supplied to her. They're in that package over there.
So Ms. Lacy, let me ask a question. So when did the rules change?
Each time that we put out services for bidding, we have the opportunity to improve those services. And so as Jana explained, we took a look at what were our minor inspections of the generators and the minor maintenance that we were doing versus the big maintenance. And so we changed this based on that. We changed those, but that's all specified in this RFP, the same one that's attached to the package, the same one that's in your folder. So that, that went out at the beginning of the process. So the people had time to review the package, to understand, to look through all the maintenance requirements, to look through what they needed to submit. And the description of how the points would be awarded is in there as well.
So when the point system started?
It started with this one.
So this the first one it started with?
On this, on this bid. But we have used point systems on several of our services throughout the city.
See, I think that's the problem there. You know, I'm all about getting good, qualified contractors and workers hired for the city of Hammond because we need to have the best to work on the city stuff at the best price. And, and I mean, if, you know, I hear all the time when we're talking about infrastructure with sidewalks and drainage, you know, we go with the cheapest one and, and they're the most sloppiest one. And so therefore, because it's cheapest, I'm in total, oh, we go with the cheapest. So we go with the lowest one. But it's time and time and again, we keep coming back, keep coming back to fix things the right way from the start. So I'm all about improving the system, but we gotta have a better system. And that price should have been done a long time ago with a point system. But you, you gotta be fair and you gotta make sure it's enough time for all the bids. Because I want, I want a lot of bids. I want, I want several bids, as many bids as we can get from everybody. And try to get a good contractor. And if they don't meet the qualification, they do a sloppy job, we're not, well, hire another one. And it needs to be notated. But it seems like it varies a good bit. And, and so, yeah, I mean, go ahead, Jana.
Let me tell you why it varies. See, Jana know that I was going against that, going up for this contract. She knew that. Now, speaking of the point system, the only one bid that I can recall the point system was when there was acting for a city engineer, right? Which I think Chuck, the city engineer.
Yeah.
That's the only one. Let me tell you how much I look into this. I love this. That's the only one that had this point system. So that point system is not fair to me, okay? And also, if you read through that, I want y'all to take the time and read through that. You'll see all the things they're putting there to knock a minority out. You may have.
So, look, I'm gonna ask another question. So look, Andre, I'm hearing the word minority. And I heard Ms. Lacy say, we can lose a grant from the trees if we do this, we do that. But now, I'm hearing, I don't know, I haven't read anything. But I'm hearing the word, we taking minority out. So, so now, I'm looking at, the city can't get sued behind nothing like this here? Or they don't have to use minority? They just pick who they want?
Well, it's hard to answer that question. So some projects do allow for that, some don't. I don't know about this RFP, Councilman.
Okay, okay, good. And then another thing, one second, Ms. Jana. I heard Mr. Davis said about a sheet that he didn't receive. Why that sheet wasn't in his package?
Yeah, she didn't, I didn't see the tabulation till just now. I didn't even get a phone call. I didn't even know that we was gonna even be talking about this. I was gonna bring it up about the way the contract was. Was, because normally when a change come, it had to have something happen. Even if this company, this company before was Arco, they must have did something to make this change. So why did we go so drastic? Why you need my application? Why do you need my financial statement? Why do you need all this? You didn't need that before. Why did you need this now?
I'm gonna ask this a question. So those questions he just presented, financial statement, workers, all that. So we have all that on all these companies?
It is a process of change, of learning from the past. And I will throw up the janitorial bid that I am now mansion in-house because we hired a company that was overall the lowest. And I want to point out, Mr. Foster is not the lowest priced, if you go back to that price sheet. The personnel, you have to have the people to be able to service all the generators in the city of Hammond. He did not provide any personnel in his package which was requested. The financials means that you have the parts and you can supply everything that's needed to repair these generators, which he didn't even put an hourly repair service rate in his package which was requested. His package is incomplete. Arco provided all. And overall, their hourly service was cheaper. Their maintenance was cheaper than his. I mean, there was no, and I'm calling out my integrity, I am very upset with. But I'm gonna tell you, I am straight by the rules.
Okay, so Arco, so do you have the company, do you have all the information on all the employees?
I sure do. I have all their customer service. I have their resumes on all their people. I have their financials. I have their background. I have their references. Please look at, and also, he's calling out the numbers. I requested a USB. Immediately after I opened these, I went and downloaded every USB and their timestamp. So you will see, there's no finigaling of the numbers.
Yeah, because see.
I can provide all of that.
Okay, well, see, this what's going on. And it's coming up to be a habit. And I don't know if the city got something against this, this young man or not. But I hear Mr. Sal say all the time, do we have anybody local that can do the job? And, and I know a lot of people get mad at Mr. Sal. Well, we need twenty more Mr. Sales. Because what Mr. Sal do, he asks us questions and he want answers that the rest of the audience won't participate. And I'm very concerned when it comes to a minority. Because I mean, you can look and see what color I am. And it's not right. And this man right though. What, what you call, something you had called Gagiba, gave her a name. But Ms. Gonzalez, he's right. You all don't know where we come from. We can't keep working hard and yet not getting these jobs. Got a young man behind, same thing in the city. Long as they giving, they okay. But when they request a job or try to get a job, that's when it becomes a problem. Because we have an issue here that, Ms. Jana, I ain't say you did nothing wrong. The rules changed, but in the process of changing the rules, they don't have to come before the city councilman or what?
Not a request for proposed.
Okay, but it's funny, this shit don't have to come before the city councilman. But we talking about these ragged ass houses that need to be tore down. And we can give ten speeches and we can get a rules on a ragged ass house, but we can't give, we can't give no input on generators? It's, you know, that's why I'm saying it's so funny. When we get concerned about a ragged ass house, but yet when it come to generators and spending money, you know, there's no input. And, and I'm like Mr. Davis, yeah, and it's probably nothing to do with you. But it's something, it's something funny about this here. Because one time he brought up when Guy was in here, we were talking about a pump in Sam District. And, and that was kind of shaky. And you know, the council gonna vote anyway. So you ain't got to worry about that. But it's like, we can't keep having these little shaky bids. And we still, okay, okay. No, it's something wrong. Because this man ain't doing all this here. And yet he being denied because you know what? He's one or two thing. He crazy, I'm crazy. And I know I ain't crazy. And apparently, he don't look crazy either. So but you can't keep pushing us in the corner.
I want to ask, so why, so you're saying, I'm all about improving the system and moving forward, getting a better system and get good bids. Because these generators, they were, a lot of them were down during hurricane. We need them running. Because you spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on them. So I, I mean, I'm all for it. And my question is, you said you requested things on there and you didn't provide, so why didn't you provide her with the financials that she requested and, and all the references and everything else?
Look in the package. My financials is in there.
I just got it tonight, so I'm into a big.
Yeah, take a look at it. My financials in there. And you know who the, your employee is, the city employee is? You're looking at him. Because just like I said, you got a minority business, fifty-five generators. Hey, I know how to outsource. I know how to hire people. I can't go until I get the job, that's when you bring the people. I can't just put people and put them on payroll. But right now. I can't just put people and put them on payroll, but right now, I can handle 55 generators. I went through the training. I put in maybe five, 10 generators almost every month. Okay, and I service them. I just, matter of fact, I got my next door neighbor, I service her generator every time because I look out for, I just talked to her before I left here. So, I know she didn't call none of my references. And like I said, that's the reason why I went and got all these certificates and all these references. So, I know I could provide the city with a better service system. I've been doing good things for the city, making it better, doing a improvement. But I want y'all to look at that. You'll see how disturbing that is. I mean, it's very disturbing and it made me mad. And also, when you brought up about the Chevy pumps, I wanted to know a status on that. Because those supposed to be new pumps, $125,000. I would love for somebody to tell me where we at with those pumps. Are we on budget? Are we gonna make it? Let me know.
So, so.
We're here to discuss a generator bid.
So, so let me just circle back real guys, I want, Jana, so he didn't turn it in or he turned it in? So, I'm trying to understand because he's saying he did. And I haven't read this because I just got it tonight, so, did he?
He turned in partial information. He did not turn in all the requested information. And I asked for last three years comparable services to the City of Hammond. I asked for references in the last five years. I asked for personnel, customer service contact. This is just not going and maintenance a generator once a year. This is repair services. One person is not gonna generate 55 generators in the city at Hurricane Ida. Impossible, not gonna happen. So, what I asked is for you to provide. And this was for him to be able to go out the box and say, hey, I'm a local, I'm in Hammond. I can provide you this, I can get this. Our whole point is to make sure you can service the City of Hammond efficiently and with a cost matter and make sure we have quality work. It was not provided in his documentation. As I said, I have a USB and I can send to every single one of you. I can go to my office and send it tonight before I leave. You can see what he turned in versus what Arco turned in. And I want to point out again, he was not the lowest proposer. This was publicly bid. It was emailed to him. There was other City of Hammond entities that was offered to propose. I cannot say how he's going to bid and how other people are going to bid. My purpose is to put it out there and get the best for the City of Hammond. And when we met, it was five different people that met, evaluated before we ever put it out and afterwards. That's how the point system come up. Not necessarily saying, hey, we went on cost. We looked at the overall project and who can service the city the best. And Arco was the decision.
Excuse me, sir. Right behind you, in the cap, come on up. Give me your name and address.
Evening, Alex Martinez, sample roofer. We own Pry Roofing. Recently, we just bought a building in 110, yeah, East Coleman. The big warehouse, we're looking to move all the business in town. The last meeting, they was talking about a roof for the fire department. That the chief said, said here, you guys can replay the video, where he said that the bid went out and only one company respond because that's the only company that can give the particular metal panels. I was in bed at home. I'm not here to make any bad weight to nobody. But what to put my attention is that when they was talking about the panels, I've been in Hammond all my life. I know that these buildings that they're talking about. And I know that I can make those panels here in town because I got the machines to make it. The company that is supposed to be winning the bid, they don't, they don't even have machines. They using a third party guy when we have everything in the stock right here in town. The next morning, we make some calls. I never met Ms. Jenna, nice to meet you. I don't know if she got a contractor background or she know what mechanically roofs mean or TPO, whatever is related to roof. I'm here for roofing jobs. So, we make some calls and she said, no, you're not gonna look the job again. It's, we not have to put it for bids because it's under $60,000.
Councilman, let me, let me just see if I understand. Are we talking about the generator maintenance item?
Roofing work.
About the roofing.
Well, I know, that's not on the agenda.
No, 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 this happened last, on the last meeting though.
No, I understand, Mr. Martinez, I'm, I'm just trying to bring order. We, you need to address items on the agenda. And if it's not on the agenda, we really can't have substantive discussions about it.
Yes, sir, so.
Well, I think what, well, I think Andre, what it is right here is that it's, it's about, it's about the, the generators were started, but this bidding deal. And I'm gonna tell you right now, so I'm a councilman here, I'm about tired of hearing issues about bidding and fair bids and unorderly and this and that about, you know, I just find it hard to believe that these two guys here are so sore about losing a bid or not getting a bid that they're coming over here, spending their time like because they lost a bid. They, they gotta have something more to it. And I understand it's not on agenda, but I don't, I want a better process of this bidding deal because I don't wanna have this, I don't wanna have this every time a bid comes out, one bid comes back or this one calling about this one not handled right. There's gotta be a problem here because I don't think these people are just, I don't know what's going on here. This, this isn't, and I understand it's not on agenda, but it needs to be addressed to figure out what's going on.
Councilman, I just try, I just wanna make it clear that the, that the open meetings law of Louisiana requires matters discussed to be on the agenda. We've been a little loose with that and not let, let it go on and try to figure out what the relevance of the conversation.
So.
My, my job is to advise the council that, that you really need to stay, if you're gonna have a substantive conversation, a debate, a long debate about something not on the agenda, you, you may be in violation of the open meetings law. Now, if you want to address this at another agenda, at another time, another place, there could be a place for that. But I'm saying tonight, I'd advise you of that.
When that gonna be though? So, the contractors that they feel that they're being.
Hold on, one second, sir. Let us move forward with this and I'll let you have, you're saying after we close out this meeting where we won't be in any, any problem. Thank you.
I got one more thing I wanna offer. If you look through that package with the hourly rate, there's nowhere in that package where it discuss an hourly rate. Okay? I just want y'all to look at that package, put some time on it and you'll see all the discrepancies, all the way that she tried to eliminate me, what she did out of this bid.
Don't we, Jana, let me ask you something. Don't we have a process to contest a bid? We, I'm, I got to believe we do.
You can protest in here because of the evaluation and the reason there wasn't no pricing because there was a valuation committee that sit there and went through all this too. But again, if Mr. Foster would read his bid package, it does call it out for an hourly rate. It's, it's called reading thoroughly. But as always, I never hear any feedback until we come to the council meeting to present this to you guys. As I want to say, all this was already addressed. I'm not able to stay to the end of the meeting to discuss that. But I will happily email y'all and answer any questions y'all have after I leave here. But like I said, please read the RFP thoroughly and all the questions that he stating that wasn't asked for in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't see this tabulation until today. If you, if once you figure out this happened, she should have sent that to me by right.
All right. Resolution number five, pleasure to council. Resolution number five. That's what I'm waiting on.
Oh, it is, approved, denied, table removed, there ought to be some action taken on this.
All right, well, I make a motion to table this item then.
Second.
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Table.
Table number five.
Okay, aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Number six.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of two Wanko messaging signs for a total of $45,100, RFP 2416, Jan Swala.
Hold up. No, she's, she worked, no, she called me, she worked for the city.
Yes, Councilman Wells, I dear.
Thank you, ma'am.
We put out a RFP for two messaging signs. I actually contacted Wanko directly to the manufacturer asking for their authorized dealers or who they have available to send in RFP proposals. We received one price from someone in Louisiana, which was traffic control products. We received a bid that was after the fact that we did not put on the agenda because, I mean, on the tabulation, because if we cannot, it's illegal. This was budgeted for, so we're just asking council's approval to purchase these signs.
How much it was budgeted for?
$50,000.
$50?
Yes, sir, it came in lower.
All right, thank you.
You know, the question, anyone on the council? Pleasure to council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number seven.
This is a discussion of quotes for the installation of vehicle tracking devices for the city equipment and vehicles, Marcus McMillan.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Pre your request, I did a little research for vehicle and equipment tracking. And as, as I stated before, I'm bringing some of the resources that I found. Based on research, we've looked at Verizon because Verizon deals with a lot of our city equipment right now as far as internet providing for our police units and things like that. So, we approached Verizon first to get idea of where this thing can kinda start with a company that we already have that supplies most of our needs. In your packets, I think you guys are gonna have the budgetary quote that was sent to us by Verizon. For, if you notice, at the top, it'll tell you what each individual category is. For the service items, we'll jump down to a service item description because that's where we're gonna start looking at things that will cost us. Above that, you'll see the hardware items. The hardware will be given to us by Verizon, we just have to pay for the services. So, if you jump down to service items, service item descriptions, you'll see that for a quantity of 200 and we just threw out a number based off of current gas cards that we have right now per vehicle. But we just, we're throwing out a number of 200. At 200, it'd be $15.95 per vehicle or per each one of those 200, which will come to $3,190. With those, you can also add different things like the battery or if it's hardwired, the specialties that are needed to, to add those to each vehicle. We didn't add any of that in because we have to look at each vehicle and analyze what equipment it may need. So, you'll have, if it's battery powered, it'd be $8.95 per vehicle. If it's hardwired, it'd be $12.95 per vehicle. If you scroll on down, you'll look at additional items in description. I was also asked to, I was asked to look at every, every type of vehicle in the city. So, we've got, I spoke with our fire chief. And our fire chief was already looking into something for the big trucks. So, I went ahead and got Verizon and give us their model of what those type of trucks would utilize, which would have the cameras that are installed in those also for the driver and front facing being due to the size of the vehicles. So, we're adding 20 of those on just for the front facing cameras. It's $19.95 per vehicle. For the cameras that face the driver or the inside of the vehicle, it, it's $4.50. Mind you, this is for the services, it's not for the equipment. You scroll down to the bottom, you'll also see asset tracking. Councilman Wells had a concern about things that weren't vehicles, things that didn't have a battery, things, you know, that, that didn't start up like a vehicle or run all the time. I did a quote for 10 of them. Just to throw some numbers out there to give you overall view, it runs approximately $8.45 per, per device or per piece of equipment. As a whole, you'll be looking at $3,763.50 per month based on the numbers that I provided. That number can change if we go less or if we go more. So, to give you an overall total or annual cost, you'll be looking at $45,162 for the numbers that I provided tonight.
So, you only checked with this one rising because that's who we use right now?
When, when we came up with this or when it was presented to me, I asked for, what exactly are we looking for? I never received it. But I did receive an email from Councilman Wells asking for an update. So, not knowing what I'm going out to get information for, I took it upon myself to go with somebody that we already have a relationship with that can give me these things without having to go through all of these preliminaries, not knowing exactly what you guys are looking for. So, all of this information that I'm providing tonight is information that I assume that you may want. So, we can make changes to that. Once I have an idea of what you're actually looking for or the numbers that you're actually looking to do, I can reach out to others to get a more definite quote.
Does the parish, do they have tracking device? I was told that they have tracking on some of their equipment in their cars. So, you don't, you don't have a clue, huh? Okay, all right, well, that'd be a good start to check on them, see who they use, if they do use them. Also, it's been going for about six months now. It was brought up by GPS tracking six months ago about on, on all the cars and equipment. Mayor even was supportive of that several months back about it. So, it's been talked about for a while, so I'm glad we started some initiative on it. But, but yeah, I'm sure there's some other options. But I mean, I was, I was for, you know, tracking devices on cars of the city and, and equipment, especially the larger equipment that costs, you know, 70 plus thousand dollars. I mean, it'd be good to know where it's at, if it's, if it's stolen, it'd be a lot easier to find, everything. So, I mean, I'm, I'm all for it and I'm, and I'm all for exploring some other options to see if we got some competitive rates on any of this, you know, I'd like to see more than one vendor.
Moving forward, if, I'll request it again. Can I get a request of what you're actually looking for to present to these vendors? Because when, when they ask for things, they're asking in detail. And when they ask like, for instance, I'd pull gas cards. That was the only thing I could think to possibly get to, get a number for vehicles to be able to present to Verizon. So, if it's only vehicles we're looking at, then I can, I can dig deeper.
Well, I would hope, I'd hope the city administration has a, a role of how many cars we have on, on, you know, on some kinda inventory count and, and large equipment. So, that total number of whatever it is would be a start and then just trying to go from there. Do you wanna put it at a cap dollar? Do you wanna put it at whatever? So, I mean, that's just, you know, and then a screen or just see where they at, just a GPS. Other cities do it, so I mean, you know, there's all kinda different systems that we need.
So, so I ask for the record.
Yeah.
Do you want me to use the numbers that I presented tonight to present to other companies to get you quotes from other companies?
Yes, that's a start. That's a start.
Marcus?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh-uh.
The, the only thing I don't, the only thing I don't understand is the, it says assets, whether it's battery or hardwired. So, that would be an additional either $13 or $9 a month charge? Like, do we need that? And I don't know what that is.
It's, it's gonna be based on the type of equipment that we're putting on it. That's why I, I put feelers out to ask you guys, what am I looking for? So, I can give you better numbers. I don't like giving you vague numbers because we're dealing with taxpayers' dollars. So, I don't wanna come in and say, oh, yeah, we're looking at 45, you know, thousand or something like that. And it may be something in here we don't need or something that we do need. So, I'm just trying to narrow it down a little bit. So, in order to make it more presentable, I guess, I left that off because most times, most vehicles, it'd be hardwired in anyway. That's an assumption, I take ownership for that. But it's just, I'm trying to make this thing as easy as possible to get, you know, to write calculations out and get these things presented correctly. So, I just need a little help from you guys. But I'll take the numbers that we have now and I'll present those and I'll come back and we'll compare it to what we've presented to them.
I, thank you for your efforts. I have no idea what we're looking for. I don't know what tracking devices look like on vehicles and, you know, or even the mechanics of it. So, I'm sorry that I haven't given you more input, but I, I don't, I mean, is it a little bug that sticks on a tractor? I, I don't get it.
It's, it's.
It's not in my, in my, you know, my repertoire.
There's several, there's several ways to do it. I mean, it, it can be battery powered or it can be ran completely off the vehicle. It's, it's several ways to do it. So, it's, it's, that's gonna make differences in the cost. So, at this point, I think what I'm gonna do is, like I said, I'll go back with what I have right now.[1759.17] I have right now. I'll make my best assumption. I'll, I'll bring that and get the approval from you guys. And we'll go through cellular providers. That makes a difference also. You can go through cellular providers or you can, like, let's use, um, Apple, for instance, the Apple Pod. That goes based off of cellular. That goes bouncing off everybody's cellphone to tell what a pod is. There's so many different ways we can do this. That's why I just wanted a little more clarity to make sure that I give you what you want and we're not, we're not going the right, the wrong direction.
Thank you. It's on here as a discussion. So, I mean, I'm glad we started a discussion. So, I mean, I'm, I'm more than happy to send you anything, any thoughts that I have, you know, between now and then to look over, so.
Again, if y'all could just, if y'all have anything that y'all want to see or that, that you want to inquire, just send it to me, please.
Marcus, this is, I mean, just from me, this is your expertise. This is something, this is your, this is your job, your life, your, you know, you have more knowledge certainly than I do in this, in this, in the field of IT. So, for me, I want you to bring back what works the best for you and what application you think will work the best with what cell company will work the best so that you have the comfort and your department has the comfort in administering it. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
I appreciate you sharing that with me. One other question that I would ask you is, we can, we can do that research, but when you start looking at vehicle tracking, what are we tracking? Are we tracking location? Are we tracking speed? Are we track, uh, tracking brake pressing? Are we tracking acceleration? Or it's so many things. That's why I'm asking, what are, what are we looking for? Because we can go from eight dollars a vehicle up to twenty-five dollars a vehicle, up to forty dollars a vehicle. Then we get to numbers and we're like, okay, let's calculate down. That's why I put the request out. Just shoot me an email saying, hey, you know, we want to check, you know, location of vehicles if something is stolen. Uh, we want to check if, if, if a vehicle was said to be in a location and it wasn't or it was. You know, it's different things that we have to look at, and I expressed these when it was mentioned the last time. I just, I'm just feeling my way through, council. That's all I'm doing.
Oh, no, you're good, and I appreciate that. Well, my concern is, I heard you say taxpayers' dollars. I like that. That's what I'm concerned about. I don't want nobody with a new vehicle taking his vehicle to Lafayette, taxpayer dollars. That's where we will know. And another issue that I'm having, if the stump grinder come up missing, seventy-five thousand dollars, we shouldn't have to make an insurance claim when it's at somebody hunting camp. That's my concern. So, that's why I asked about the tracking device. So, uh, the cameras in the people's face? No, you don't have to do that. But it's little things, but you say, I can contact you anytime I want. So, we have to start somewhere. And this is a start because right now, this is the issue we're having, and it's going to come up later. The police got a problem. Every time units come out, now it's a problem, what police get this unit? What police get that unit? So, apparently, the rules have been changed in the police department. So, now, see, whoever get this unit, because what I'm looking at now, it's no longer a city vehicle, it becoming a personal vehicle. That's my concern. I like what you said, taxpayers' dollars. And that's my biggest concern. I'm concerned about the taxpayers' dollars and making sure that if this vehicle pulled to be in LaRonde, it's in LaRonde. And be exact, I'm glad you said that. With the shooting of Lionel, we would have known, if we'd had a tracking devices on those vehicles, we'd have known what police was at Lionel during the shooting. We wouldn't have to figure out, Uncle Junebug, uh, Judybug, we wouldn't have to figure none of that out. That's all we got to do is go to the tracking device. So, the tracking device going to help out a whole lot. And then it, it goes to, okay, this young man put two hundred dollars in the car yesterday. Then he turned around, put two hundred dollars in the car today. All these miles adding up, taxpayers' dollars. So, I'm glad you brought that up. That's my concern. And it's something that we've been talking about, but we've been putting it off, we've been putting it off. So, I appreciate the research that you've been doing on this here. Hopefully, we can have something come that we can have on the agenda for next council meeting. So, I appreciate everything you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad to see it here.
Thank you, Marcus. Resolution number eight?
Resolution to purchase four Dodge Durangos for a total amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, forty-eight cent using state contract four four zero 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 three three seven nine five. Chief Bergeron?
We're looking to purchase, uh, four Durangos. As we all know, there's vehicle shortages across the country. Just recently, at a fleet expo, we were advised by Chevy that they have no idea when their next cars are going to be coming out or the next Tahos. We're also on the binge or the possibility of the UAW going on strike, which is going to then hinder more vehicles coming. We originally planned on trying to get eight Durangos because they are coming in as of November. Prior to being able to get to this council meeting, four of them were already sold for what we believe there's still four there that we can purchase, as long as they wasn't purchased between, uh, yesterday and today. So, we're asking for four vehicles.
Okay. Anyone from the public on this item?
Yeah, I just, uh, I got a number here, but I'd like to know what company. Since it's a state, it's a state deal, but what company is providing, uh, the council, you know, of this, uh, four vehicles?
It's premier Dodge, uh, I believe that's based in New Orleans or Matory, somewhere on the South Shore. It's premier Dodge, they are the state contract, uh, for, I guess, this part of Louisiana that you have to go through.
Anyone else? Anyone from the council?
Yeah. Since I've been in office, which is four years, how many vehicles have been purchased altogether since I've been in office?
Councilman Wells, unfortunately, you're asking me this, uh, and off the top of my head, I, I don't know that answer.
Yeah, because it's coming up, because I asked, uh, Angelo, I had asked him, do y'all need any more vehicles? The time he stood up here before us, because I told him, I'm getting tired every time I look around, the police department asking for vehicles. So, Ms. Lacy, is there any way you can look up how many vehicles been purchased from the time I've been a city councilman going on four years now?
Sure, we can give that number to you first thing in the morning.
But, so you want us to vote on this in the morning or you want me to vote on it in the morning? Because I, I can't keep, we just got four trucks, four pickup trucks to haul tires in. That's what was said when they came before, because actually what the four trucks are for, to haul tires. So, we're just buying vehicles in this, another, again, taxpayers' money. And I'm looking at these vehicles, they so pretty. You got people, the community saying, man, these vehicles nice. The city of Hammond only one driving in vehicles like that. It's taxpayers' dollars. And I asked a simple question, how many vehicles been purchased by the police department since I've been a city councilman? And the chief can't answer it. The administration can't answer it. If I can't get an answer from you all, I don't know who to get an answer from. And it just, it's, it's not a surprise. This is something come up when I saw the four vehicles. Because it was on here last, last time we was at the council meeting, it was taken off, and now it popped back up. So, I just want to know.
So, Councilman Wells, that's not a, a simple question to just rattle off the top of my head because, uh, as, as we know, if I say the wrong number, then next week it'll be I'm up here lying to y'all, and I don't want to get down that, down that road.
Well, it didn't happen before.
Councilman Wells, I'll let you speak. I'm just trying to respond.
Yeah.
Okay? Historically, Hammond Police Department has purchased anywhere from eight to ten vehicles per year. The challenge has been that we've ordered vehicles, and then because of the manufacturers not being able to provide the vehicles, then we've had to cancel those things that y'all may have approved and then come back and ask for other vehicles. We've had to step, step out and purchase vehicles like trucks and put them into divisions like our fleet division, our training division, because we can't get your typical Tahoe-type police vehicles right now. The Dodges are something that we have not had in a long time. I think it was two thousand and four, maybe was the last time we had a Dodge vehicle. We can't get Chevrolet Tahos. Because of years past, when we didn't get cars approved, we then had to turn around and we kept cars on the road longer and longer, and our maintenance budget for cars have gone up. It is essential that we purchase vehicles every year. If you ask me the exact amount right now, obviously, I can't give you that. You know, that's something that you could easily request prior to. This agenda goes out and, and, and everybody's up here said they read it, so you could easily ask that prior to. But right now, for you to come and ask me that and say that we just can't give you that answer, of course, we can't.
I mean, you're the leader of the department. The leader of the department asks for cars, and if there's so short and few, and there's so little being ordered, it should be easy to say, two, one. I mean, it's not
Over four years.
Yeah, over four years. I mean, you act like it's shortage of cars, so therefore, it has to be a little number. So, that little number, the head of department coming and ask for four more one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for four cars, I think you should be prepared when you come up here asking for four more cars. How many cars you have? I know, I would if I'm asking somebody to give me money, hey, yeah, uh, I'm, uh, I only have two in the last four or five years where shortage is. I only have three. It's kind of, you ask for new cars. For what? What are these for? I mean, there's a lot of questions there. I mean, I don't know nothing. I mean, I'm just trying to understand, the head of department should know how many cars he's purchased in the last four years or at all.
You know, Councilman Divertario, I will tell you this, that we have council members that sit on this board that forget how they voted against the police in times past and say they support us. That being said, it's been four years, and I can't tell you specifically how many, but I can tell you that we order cars so we can provide police and public safety to the citizens of Hammond. For me to sit here and get beat up over us wanting to purchase vehicles, every single year, we have a, a, a millage that has passed to help us purchase equipment. This money is coming out of the millages, the citizens voted and passed, I believe, at eighty-four percent to help provide vehicles so we can provide police service. So, to say that you think it's crazy that I don't know exactly how many cars, come on. I asked you how you vote on some things, you might say something different, right? It was four years. So, to sit here and say what I should assume or what I should know is just completely outrageous to me. Council President, we're asking for the cars. For me to continue to sit up here and just get badgered about how many we have or what we need and don't need, it, it's a little bit crazy to me.
So, I don't need to be a city councilman if I can't sit here?
I'm speaking to you.
No, I don't need to be a city council, but I can't ask how many cars that you done bought since you been here.
I didn't say you can ask.
So, that mean, I don't need to sit here.
What I said was, I don't have that answer for you, but if you're, I'm willing to get to you.
That's right. That's what you said.
So.
So, but I'm gonna say this here, and we talking about the cars, uh, I'm gonna say this here. As a criminal, do a criminal have to be in a Dodge Durango he can't get in a Chevrolet? Because you just trying to put him in the backseat anyway.
Councilman Wells, I would love to get Chevrolets.
Yeah, so as a criminal, I don't think, he, he don't want to see no cars. I don't care what kind it is.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, if we continue to vote down police things and the things that we need to keep our citizens safe, you won't see the
Let me correct you right there, because you love, you love using
We interrupted you, sir. I didn't interrupt you.
Because you're lying.
I didn't interrupt you.
Because you're lying. Because you're lying. You're lying. You do good lying. I'm gonna tell you right now.
Council President, are you done with me, sir?
We have never, we have never
Council President, please.
Yes, yes.
Please.
We have never voted against
Use the gavel.
We haven't.
Please.
Lacy, this is a city council meeting.
We haven't.
I understand.
No, but you don't understand.
I do understand.
No, you don't.
First speaking, this is Mary two zero eight Camelia Avenue. I recall maybe two, three years ago, they were up for some Tahos. I think they were asking for ten, if I'm not mistaken. And, um, and, I don't know, we hem-hawed around. It wasn't to whoever's liking. They sold them out from under us or whatever, blah, blah, blah. Came back up. I believe they got the Tahos, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe not all that they asked for, but they got some. And then I believe they got flipped. I think five cars were wrecked that year. Um, and then we started talking about the cars in the graveyard, and there's like a hundred and something fenced in and mechanic work and so on and so forth and blah, 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 blah. So, the type of vehicle that you're driving does not keep our city safe. I would also like to venture to say that I don't think that every single police officer needs a heavy-duty Tahoe, okay? They can drive a Crown Vic. The chief of police doesn't need a Tahoe loaded out like that. He's not doing that type of work. Okay? So, that's just my opinions. Now, I do support the police department. I vote for their taxes every single time it comes up. I vote for them to get the taxes, the mills, so that they can have what they need. They also got Axons, I believe, at the same time they were asking for the Tahoe. The body came back in 2020, brand new, they don't work. Or they're not on, or they forgot to get turned on. I mean, this is common play, which is why I'm reluctant to ask my city council to spend another one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Okay? So, that's just my opinion. No. No.
Yeah, and, and I, I support the police department too, but for him coming up here, lying about saying that, I have. And if you want to tally up, Lacy, uh, for the next meeting, you can tally up, you can tally up, how many dollars have this city council approved for the police department since we been in here? Because it's the same people on this board. So, tally up how many thousands and millions of dollars. Tally up that, tally up that system that we approved, that we had four or five bids out there for the system they've been using forever, and they had, that system they've been using for twenty years was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But other two bids came at four fifty. One came at one point two million. Other came at seven fifty. So, we all support it because he sat up here and said, oh, that one for seven fifty, that's the best one. So, we supported seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we could have got it for two fifty or anything else. So, so that is what he sat up and did it there. So, we have supported time and time after again, as much as we could for that police department. And they're not doing without. So, no matter what they say or whatever he says, not they, he, it is incorrect. So, make sure you look at the facts, because we've, we've supported the police department. And the dollars should show, because you can go pull up all the dollars and how much we've approved for them over the years.
Thank you for your support, council. Uh, the question is, can we get these Durangos that we truly need?
Well, I, what we're up against is, and, and I'm gonna say this, for the record, I am not against law enforcement. For the record, I am against bad law enforcement. So, let that be said. For the vehicles, I'm not going to vote for it. I vote for everything the police department want. Right now, I'm dealing with an issue in my community where a young man got shot in the mouth.[1573.73] Man, you almost had me thinking I was in Detroit, Eric Mays. But that's what I look at, we have an issue. So, President, thank you so much for giving me a chance to speak.
Excuse me. Uh, you know, there's a lot of controversy going on in here and, uh, you know, the council is the one who's responsible for what's really happening in the city. Even though these people, you know, that's them taking the mayor and the, and the administration and everything else, apparently they're not getting the information to the council or passing it on to the other people. So what I'm asking is this, for the council to hold the, you know, the employees of the city of Hammond, hold them liable for it. You call them and ask them, just like this court deal, I, I mean, that's, that's a hundred, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars you're looking at. And do they need it? Well, he says yes, but I'm not saying that we don't need it, but I can say one thing. I think they're getting by pretty good right now, from what I've seen. I haven't seen, uh, I haven't even seen any of them patrolling on, uh, you go past, you go past racetrack, you don't see nobody patrolling in there. The city limits go all the way to Baptist, okay? Uh, that is the city limits. And I'm just wanting to reassure, I don't know who's in, who's in control of the police department. It's supposed to be Mr. Bergeron and the mayor to tie this up and make sure that they set up a schedule where the people of, of, of the police department are patrolling all over Hammond, not just in the city limits. Of the city of Hammond, downtown Hammond. As, you see cars galore, it's ridiculous.
Thank you, Sam.
But I'm out in the outskirts and I don't see none. You could, you could call, I'll tell you what, you could call.
Sam.
I'm, I, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm trying to make a statement here that, yeah, they want vehicles and everything else, but we don't even get no vehicles out there. Nobody comes to checking on us. Call Shawty Rogers, he'll tell you how many times they go there. Not many. Thank you.
So, so what are these four Dodge Durangos for? Well, what are they servicing right now that they don't have cars right now? What, what department? The patrol units, they don't have patrol units, what are they replacing? That's what I'm saying, what is the need?
Older units with high mileage and units that are out, you know, they've, they've been used heavily. How many miles do you have on most of your older units, chief?
We have some two thousand, uh, ten, I believe, that's still on the road, that are over a hundred thousand miles.
We're about the white ones, the older ones.
I don't know exactly how many, I mean, once, once a unit, a police unit gets to be ten, eleven, twelve years old.
Come to the mic, come to the mic, where the audience can hear you. Thank you.
Once a police unit gets to the ten, eleven-year-old mark, then the maintenance price starts going up very significantly, um, which is why it's important that we continue to replenish the fleet, to keep us in an updated fleet, to be able to, uh, patrol and, and do what we need to do as far as policing goes.
And usually it's Kent with the, with the, uh, body, with the shop out there telling us which ones that he's maintaining more than he should be as far as the cost goes and it's time to get another.
And cars don't get deadlined or pushed off until the maintenance barn says, hey, this car's costing more money to, uh, keep and keep it going. We recently just had to put four new engines, um, in vehicles that in the past, if we would've had an updated fleet, we probably would've surplus those vehicles out, uh, and sold it off at auction.
Well, where are the last ten, where'd they go? I think it was ten of them last time, I think we, we got Tahos.
They were distributed throughout the department, but the majority of them go into the patrol division.
Okay. All right, well, Nick, I'm gonna say this right now, the next time that you, your department, whatnot, or any department comes and asks for cars, I want to know how many and the, and the amount of dollars we've, we've invested in the cars, put up on the screen, so everybody in this audience can see how much money and dollars for cars and how many we've purchased in the last four years or ever since you've been chief. So, so you can't, you can't, you know, say, well, since you've been there, that's what I care about.
Councilman Divotario, just to be clear, uh, my comment wasn't that y'all, I said, check the voting record on how y'all have voted against some of the things for the police department. Yes, did we come around, ended up getting your votes? Absolutely. But there was a lot of challenges that went with that, and, and part of the challenges we're having with our maintenance budget is because we weren't approved of vehicles, and as is one person who stepped up here, they were sold out from underneath us, and that's just a challenge that we deal with. Uh, we've dealt with that, with, with this process, and look, if you don't approve it, you don't approve it, and we're gonna deal with that again, and the maintenance budget's just gonna continue to grow, and, and that's just part of it, and we're gonna deal with it. It's y'all option, y'all get to vote for it. What I'm telling you is the police department, you have to continually to purchase new vehicles, you can contact state police, Covington, Mandeville, anybody else, everybody, sheriff's office, everybody purchases vehicles every year because you have to keep your fleet up to date and squared away and able to respond to calls.
And I'm gonna clear this up for the record, uh, that note, to me, voting against is no. Table is tabling and voting yes is approving. So I remember distinctly about the cars you keep referring to and trying to make a policing matter that we don't support the police department by, we voted no. It was a tabled, we tabled, and you table, we table a lot of things that we go vote for. Tabling sometimes, you're getting more information about an issue, you're not voting against it, that's why they have three options. No, table, and approve. So therefore, that's clear, it was tabled, not against. So just want to make that clear.
One more thing, and I'm, and I'm gonna end it here. For the record, I'm the one voted for you to be the chief. For the record, and everybody need to know, that millage money, that's, that's taxpayers' money. So if it come from the millage or come out the city budget, it still belongs to the taxpayer, and, and we shouldn't get it confused. Yes, the voters voted for it to help the police department out, to help the fire department out, but that don't mean every time you look around, you come up here asking for a million dollars or, or two hundred thousand dollars, it's taxpayers' money. So that will need, that need to be understood. So that millage, we don't have to say millage no more. All us know about millage is taxpayers' dollars, for whatever dollar it is, it come from the taxpayer.
And, and to correct that earlier, yeah, I heard, you know, Sal make a comment about Baptist, and Lacy said, oh, that's not true. No, he was incorrect, he's talking about Alida and on the other side of town, which he referred to Baptist, and he is referring to the same thing I could call, sometimes they don't see patrolling out there as much, cause it's way at the end of the city limits on the district. So that's what he was referring to when he said Baptist, he said, oh, that's not true. No, the city goes all the way to Alida Street and actually to his house on one ninety out there. So therefore, he would like to see a little more patrolling over there in that area on the other side of the interstate whenever it come. So that's, and if I'm approving cars, I'd love to see it in District Four on that side of town as well, patrolling a little bit, so.
Pledge of the council.
Motion to approve.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divotario.
Aye.
Resolution number nine.
Thank you.
A resolution to transfer, to transfer forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars from the Tangi Humane Society line item five six zero two five two into the animal control line item five six zero two four nine, and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Tangi Hoa Parish Government Animal Control for animal control support for the period of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to June thirty at twenty twenty-four for forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and twelve cents. Lacy Landrum.
After some diligent conversations, both with the Tangi Hoa Parish Animal Control Unit and with the Tangi Hoa Parish Leadership, um, we have found some new solutions that we can use. Uh, we are requesting to move some of the remaining money, um, into this line item so that we can partner with that to have a greater capacity for animals. Um, right now, the Tangi Humane Society is out of room, like many, many humane societies across the state and in other states as well. So they're unable to accept additional animals. Um, animal control has a different policy at times, and so it would just open up additional resources for us. Currently, um, out of the amount of money allocated to animal control as a whole, we've spent four thousand, one hundred and five dollars. Um, remaining, we have fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two. So we're asking to transfer this. It does follow the same, uh, population guidelines that we have used in the past with the parish, um, in terms of designating how much Hammond would contribute to that system, and this would be based on that amount, um, based on population from September fifteenth to June thirtieth.
Dr. Landrum, I'd like to thank, thank you guys for looking into this, because I was receiving a serious amount of calls from my district on this. Uh, and when I asked Ms. Lisa to put this on here for a discussion, she informed me that you had already sent something in. I've been in communication back with the chief as well, because he's been in the link on this with the complaints that have been coming in. So I'm glad to see that we're able to, to move forward with this, because it is a serious problem, and it's something that needs to be addressed. So, uh, I'm supporting it, because it's something that needs to be done. And like, as I stated, over the last, I would say, month or so, I know from my district, I've been receiving a lot of emails, and I've been playing phone tag with some of them to let them know I was gonna be looking back into this issue, and we're here with it right now. Thank, I would thank you.
I will say that over the last two months, we've had lots of meetings with different animal groups, um, both in, located directly in Hammond and within the larger region. Um, we are looking additionally at some of our internal ordinances and policies about how we handle animals, about our spaying and neutering program, and we're gonna work together with our parish, um, to, to make sure we can make some positive changes.
Well, originally how this came with me is, is it wasn't to necessarily get not fund animal control, it was for the issue that I was having, and that is on holidays, after-hours, and those issues for the animals, and the, the breed or the, the, the type of animal that they would, you know, it's more than, sometimes we get calls of random stuff that, random animals that are, you know, possums, raccoons, uh, you know, armadillos or whatever it may be, uh, dog, you know, dogs and cats are a common one. And those were the issues we were having, and if somebody's at a holiday, you know, and they usually have family, friends over or whatnot, and, you know, Thanksgiving or Christmas, which, you know, I understand they're closed or not, but my, my problem was if we have a process, we needed a process for the after-hours, a phone line or whatnot. So the people would actually know, if there is, if it already was in place, then we need to make it clear on how that handles after-hours, because what they would do is, they would call in and say, oh, they closed, they closed, or they don't take this or whatnot. And so I knew it wouldn't be a good idea just sending everything to the police department to call, because that's not their specialty. So, I mean, and it shouldn't be. So what I'm getting at is, is that that was the problem, and if it costs a little bit more money, not saying I'd be for it, but I would like to see what the options would have been to provide a little more service to the people in, in those times of need. And that, that was where my, my issues that I brought up, that I wanted to see improved, or see what way we could improve, or if there was a way to prove why, so I could let the people know about, that's why that, that's not offered.
So Councilman Divotario, we don't agree often, but we do agree on that. So I will tell you that a part of the problem was that, uh, the communication wasn't there. The people didn't know exactly what numbers to call, there is a law enforcement line that you can call after-hours. There are certain things that the Tangi Hoa Parish Animal Control, they just won't respond to. You have to go to Wildlife and Fisheries or these other wildlife rescue groups. Um, that's something that we've really focused on as a, as a police department, to make contacts with these outside groups, to where if you have the raccoon, the allocator, we could actually reach out to those. Unfortunately, most agencies do not offer twenty-four-hour service unless it's a vicious dog, or if there's a dog bite or something along those lines. One thing we've worked with, with the animal control, uh, Tangi Hoa Parish Animal Control, is we're gonna set up a system to where if one of our officers is outside and, and they come across a dog after hours, and it's not a vicious dog, but it's a, a stray or something like that, um, it's causing problems, it's a nuisance, either A, they will send somebody out, or they're gonna give us an opportunity where we could actually pick the dog up for them and drop them, potentially drop it off at the Tangi Hoa Parish Animal Control. I think a lot of the problem come down to whether it be our department, the citizens, uh, we weren't necessarily sure exactly what the animal control would do, so we had an unrealistic expectation of when they should respond and not respond. Uh, the Tangi Hoa Parish Animal Control, uh, President Robbie Miller has, has been great, and so has Joe, and, and, uh, even the guy running it, Chippy. Uh, they're gonna start giving education and training, um, shift change training to all of our officers, so we understand. So when a citizen calls us, we can explain to them, this is the policies, this is the rules with the animal control, um, as well as they plan on giving us some, some better services and an absolute straight line, direct line to the, uh, animal control person on call.
And many, a couple of years back, uh, updated, we proposed and the council approved the, we updated, uh, and improved the, uh, no leash law with the dogs. So I don't know if y'all have a copy of that, that ordinance that was updated with actual, a process of what, you know, y'all can enforce for a no leash, you know, dog that's roaming around no leash. So I don't know if y'all have a copy of that, but it may need to be circulated, cause, you know, I'd like to see that enforced if there's a loose dog with no leash and you know where it is. I mean, there's a process of dog to be, could be warned, you give a citation, ticket, whatnot, and then eventually, you know, the woman wants to take a dog, but we want some consequence where they keep the dog on the leash.
Yeah, and, and look, there's a lot of times that we deal with that, and, and, you know, the people don't know that it got out the gate, uh, dug out the gate or something like that. Or then if it becomes a stray and nobody wants to take claim of the animal, um, when the police are there, it goes to animal control, and animal control could potentially follow up on it on their end. Um, that's one thing we're working with them, is to make sure that we have a better relationship with them, to where if they have something that's deemed to be a criminal account, such as the leash laws and stuff like that, then our officers can step in and actually handle the criminal side of it.
Does the administration send over the updated ordinance that we had to the police department, whatever it's got?
Marcus keeps all city ordinances on our laptops, and they automatically repopulate and update whenever the, uh, the ordinances come in. But it never hurts to send out a, a separate email saying, hey, just to remind y'all, because with the city ordinances is, you know, the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of state laws and everything else that goes along with it.
Thank you, chief.
President, uh, Kelp, is by any chance that you could get somebody from the parish, from the animal control, invite them to come to the next meeting, where they can explain how they operate and what take place? And after-hours, could we get somebody, since we about to give away forty-seven thousand dollars? So could we get somebody to come up and explain to the citizens on, on the process, on how it works, from the parish?
I mean, well, yeah, it would've been nice probably to be here tonight, really, but yeah, I, I think that's a great idea to really hear it from them.
I can also email y'all, cause that was one of the things we requested from them, um, so we understood and all that. I could also email y'all, they sent me a document, uh, last week at some point, basically letting them know what they would respond to. So I could email that to Council President, he can send that out also.
I just want to add a little to that. Uh, I've had a couple of neighbors, they call the, uh, Humane Society for the animals. And, uh, they actually turn down cats, they turned down a bunch of different animals. So I don't know what, you know, Tangi Hoa Parish, what's their policies, but, uh, I would, I, I would like to know a lot more information about that, uh, since we all spending, you know, fifty thousand dollars roughly to the parish. Uh, like I said, I had neighbors that, that, you know, called, uh, I think it was raccoon, possums, you know, out, out, out. In our area, we have a lot of that, so, uh, they, I went there and they, they said they didn't take care of that. And now I understand, uh, we have to go through maybe, uh, the parish to get this cleared up and give, give us a number or something to where we could, you know, whenever we had that problem, we could call that number and get it taken care of. Thank you.
Problem we have.
Name and address.
Rothwell four oh five East Charles Street. Uh, the kind of problem we have is, my wife rescues cats. She's pulled thirteen from one house in the last two weeks.
Right.
We've personally paid for them to be neutered and spayed, because nobody, the Tangi Hoa Parish, or Hammond will not pay to get in a Tangi Hoa Parish deal to cover that expense, so we personally have paid for that. That's twenty-five bucks a pop, but we have a major cat problem in this area.
Right.
And I said, that's just two weeks, thirteen cats. That's what we've been doing for two weeks.
I just want to say that I'm excited about this, because since there was a.
Name and address.
My name's Deborah Swenson, I live at twelve Ravenwood Street in Hammond, Louisiana, in Woodbridge subdivision. I was told, I guess, several weeks or a month ago, that there was no longer, and when we lived in city limits, that if we found a stray animal, we usually try to help it or, you know, do the stray hole thing ourselves and try to see, get it rescued or that kind of thing. But if we can't, you know, we always knew that the shelter was an option. So when I found out, or I was told that we, living in the city limits, could no longer get an animal and bring it to the shelter, we were like, what, what do we do? So we've just been, you know, make and do, I haven't really found anything thankfully, but I do know all the rescue groups are, um, you know, pretty strapped. Um, so I'm just excited that this is being worked out and that y'all are working with this, because it, it does help. Um, I do know that there's a, just so y'all know, the, the lady that runs the Facebook page for lost pets at Tangi Hoa, she actually lives in Connecticut. She, um, when it was, came up for a new administrator, she could not, um, there was no one down here that could handle it or could do it. So what we all do were the faces and help with streets and coordinates and things like that. But that Facebook page is just, you know, a help thing, and it works really, really well for the parish and for the city. But I just, you know, mainly want to say thank you so much for working this out, because it is, it is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Wells, I, I, I understand your concern, but I've been dealing with this for a while inside of my district, and it's more than, than the thirteen cats that he, that he, that, yeah, that he just named. Uh, the, I mean, a constant email loop with different things, with the animals and things that are going on, and, uh, I gave my word that we were gonna have a solution to this problem on tonight. So I will have them to come out the next meeting to explain it. Uh, I've been in constant emails and communication, and they've explained to me what they, pretty much was gonna be able to do and not do. I have them to come out the next meeting, but I, I, I can't push it back any further, because they've been dealing with, this has been a serious issue in this one neighborhood alone by itself for over two months.
Well, my issue wasn't, I'm against it, it's a problem and needs to happen. My issue is, is the communication of, I want to, we, I think the people, and everybody needs to know more detailed information and communication process of using animal control. So that's not, so what I was talking about, technically, he should've been, somebody should've been here on this meeting, really, because it came up on this meeting, so he could've answered all these questions and clarified and cleared it. I'm for fixing the problem, getting it fixed. Like I said, originally, it came up with, I was wanting a better system, or tried to look at a better system, using them or whatnot to try to improve the service, if it was more money, if it was more whatever, to fix it. So we have, you know, the problem fixed throughout the city on a lot of issues with, with the animals, so that's not me. But, but I think they do need to come to the city council meeting and explain exactly how that process works.
And I didn't have a problem with it, uh, if I'm dealing with thirteen cats or two cats, uh, I just need somebody to come get them. So I don't have a problem with what's going on. I just want somebody to explain the after-hours or how it work on the weekends. See, the problem that I have, when we have cats and dogs in our community, and we call, uh, they gonna, nine, ten, ten, they gonna call me. I'm gonna tell them, call after-hour number, and that's when we have issues. So this is issues that we're having in Hammond. So now, we just coming up with a, a solution now, and thank God that we do have a solution. And I wish all our process can work like this, when we have a problem, let's come up with a solution. You know, I didn't hear nobody arguing, nobody fussing, and for the record, see, chief, when the mayor called you? see chief, when the mayor called you, I couldn't hardly hear you. But if I say something, well, Councilman Wells, such and such, such and such, I want you to give me that same respect that you get a mayor, because guess what? You need me. Because you know what I do? Everything you ask for come before the city councilman. And we have to know how to respect one another and talk to one another. So when you don't know how to, I'm talking, I'm talking, I'm talking. The same respect you gave a mayor, that's the same respect that you should give every city councilman, whether you like them or not, whether you agree or disagree with them. It's the way you talk, and it's the way you carry yourself, that's what we have to learn to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Got to get a motion to...
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Before we go any further, I want to make a comment. And I agree totally with what Councilman Wells just said. Everybody up here has grown, everybody up here need to respect one another. We might not agree on everything, but there's still a level of respect that has to be done, in this setting, outside of this setting. Respect. Nobody wants to be called out of their name, nobody wants to be belittled, anything of that nature. We have to keep the level of respect there. Everybody has earned their position to sit up here. It was not given to you. You earned your position to sit here. And I understand that totally. And me personally, since I've been sitting in this chair, I have never disrespected anyone publicly sitting in this chair. We need to keep that in mind. I might not agree with everybody, and everybody might not agree with me, but I'm not going to disrespect you publicly, and I'm not going to call you out of your name, and I'm not going to raise my voice at you. So let's keep that in mind.
For blank. I just want to say, I saw you yell that from that area for a point of order, and I saw you yell that from that area for a point of order. But my thing is, I've been here some hours. These gentlemen have been here some hours. You never give us a time, you never give us time to say anything. I understood what he said about the agenda. We're taxpayers. Y'all got to fit it in somewhere where we can speak. We just sit here through all this time. And you sit them down. We go off the script a lot, Andre. But you got to fit in some time. It shouldn't have to be on your council report, you got a clock. People should have their three minutes.
That's true. And some people get more than their three minutes.
Right.
And I try to, I got where you're coming from.
All I'm saying is, we're taxpayers, we listen to the whole agenda. If it take four, five hours sometime, I sit here. You can't keep shutting us up. We have to have a time to speak. Give us that time.
Discussion of funding for nonprofit organizations.
This item came up during our budget session. It was decided that we, well, the conversation was not to fund any nonprofit organizations. The second time it came up for discussion, it went to, we might fund some nonprofits. I've been receiving phone calls and conversations from outside organizations and others about this, and I've decided to bring it back to see where we would be heading in this direction, of either sending it back to that organization to fund these particular organizations, or to let them know flat out that nothing's going to happen. So.
Well, originally, you know, I'm going to just say this, but, you know, originally, I really think we have a problem with the nonprofits as far as the organization and the policy, so they're working on it with a group. From the get-go, I've said that, at the end of the day, if not just, I'm going to refer back to the Children's Discovery Center, they had an agreement that was made prior to all the changes on there, that was a step-down plan, every year, 10,000, 10,000. So I was all for that. If I supported and didn't think they should be on a step-down program, it doesn't matter, because I was in respect of, they were fine, the city got with them, it was a 10,000 dollar step-down, boom, boom, boom. They had a plan, they had an action plan, everything was set, they were following through it. So really, they were the only ones in all the group that actually had a agreement made, and that both parties were on the same page. You know, they were agreements, from my understanding, that the Children's Discovery Center was on an agreement of the 10,000 a year. And so they were planning their budget for that, 10,000 a year. They weren't asking for more. That's what that agreement was set in stone a few years back. So the other ones, I wish they all had some kind of plan as well, too. But at the end of the day, you know, all I'm saying is, the one out of the five or six or seven that was in there, that should have made it easy for us to really figure, okay, well, that's one that should be settled, and shouldn't be an issue, because they already on a plan. Now, is there a representative in this office, all this, Elsbet? Are you representing him tonight? Now, did y'all, y'all had an agreement in place, and there was no issues? Or no?
Elsbet Smith, 711 North Oak Street. I'm currently serving as the president of the board of the Louisiana Children's Discovery Center. Yeah, we currently have a cooperative endeavor agreement in place, and the agreement has been, every annually, to receive $10,000 less, to get us down to $50,000, and eventually maybe less than that. I understand that, I respect that. Our organization has been working towards that, even through COVID. We were held, which we really appreciate, of course, I would like to say, we appreciate your funding and all of your support over all these years. We have continuously cut the amount that we've been receiving. If that is going to continue to be cut, that's fine. We just need some direction. We haven't had any direction or any communication this year about whether we were receiving any funding. According to our, we base our budget on the cooperative endeavor agreement, which said we would get 70,000 this year, which is 10,000 less than we got the previous year. We just would like some direction and communication, because if we're not going to get any funding, certainly that's going to greatly affect our operations and the services that we can provide.
So y'all were able to do that? Did y'all have any issues planning for that, that step-down? Like, I mean, y'all got, I mean, obviously, everybody wants more money. So I'm not going to ask, yeah, you'd like a million dollars, everybody would. So, I mean, but what I'm getting at is, y'all were on pace to do that step-down to 70?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then, yeah.
And 1650?
So it stopped at 50? Because I didn't, I didn't know where it stopped. I thought it was 1010 until eventually, I guess.
It did. It stopped at 50, but, yeah, it's certainly there, it built in the communication that it would, could eventually go away completely. That's fine, and we need to be able to plan for this, but we have to, we intended to, and based on that agreement, we were doing that $10,000 at a time manually.
So there was a curveball kind of threw to you this year, didn't there?
Well, yeah, just in that we haven't had, haven't had, yeah.
No funds from the city?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we moved 100, we funded a bucket for nonprofit organizations of 143,893. We specifically funded within the budget, Council on Aging, Crime Stoppers, and CASA. And then we zeroed out with the, I guess the intention, there's lots of discussion, of having that bucket of money, which is 143,893, to award nonprofits from, if we were to choose. If y'all recall, the Grants Committee, which did a lot of really good work, creating a really nice application, which actually included, included a grading, a points and grading scale, to help us or them determine the amount someone should get. So I think a lot of work's gone into it. And, yeah, I mean, we've left a lot of people hanging. So I appreciate Councilman Andrews, you for putting this on, and we got to make some decisions.
Thank you, ma'am. You say you the Children Museum?
Yes, I'm the president of the board of the Discovery Center, yes.
Okay, then. And so, so you really need that 70,000, all right?
We budgeted for it, and we were counting on it. Yes, councilman.
Okay, so I'm going to say, get a 70,000 out of the Children Museum. And I'm going to say, get a Black Heritage Center, that other 70,000. And if I'm adding this right, that's 140,000. And we got 3,000 left. And we need to get this 3,000 out of the way tonight, and all this shit will be over with. No, no, that's why we got problems tonight. What's the name of that group, Ms. Lacy, that helped you downtown with the plaque, had got a plaque for, what's, the group branding, what's the name of it?
Urban Market Experience.
Urban Market Experience. Huh, that's it?
UMX.
Okay, UMX. That go to 3,000 dollars there. So that's the 143,000. Congratulations, ma'am. We took care of the animal control with no problem at all. So now we're going to take care of the nonprofits with no problem at all.
Christine Monastery, 208 Camilla Avenue. How many nonprofits do we have that seeking money, the 140,000, to where it could, I mean, you have a cooperative endeavor with this lady, so you owe the 70,000. That's not...
Really not much to talk about. I mean, well, I mean, that's an agreement.
You're in a contract with them.
No, it's year to year.
It's only an annual bonding. But didn't she say that this year was your 70,000, and next year is going to be 60,000?
Yeah, but within the cooperative endeavor, it says that it could be pulled every fiscal year.
Oh, it could be just completely eliminated.
We're not in a contract. It's just kind of an expectation.
But there's an outline for them, and the money's there, so it's not like a shortfall. So, you know, I mean, you can get out of any contract you want to get out of.
I don't mean to disrespect anybody, councilman, but I mean, that's not only two, only three nonprofits that we have, that seeking that money?
No, we had a lot of them, but what we was doing, we was actually cutting back. And it was part of the cut, because what we were trying to do, we were trying to add more drainage and sidewalks, and getting trees cut in District 3. So I decided to cut back on it, but somehow this money was still left in the budget, 143,000. And so President Kelp be getting phone calls, and I'm receiving calls, too, about what we're going to do with that 143,000.
Are they seeking, when they call you, are they seeking, or?
There's a process that they have to go through as far as filling out their paperwork and showing what's needed. In June, when this came up at our budget meeting, it was stated that they didn't want to move forward, we're giving nobody anything.
I see that.
They decided, that's true.
I see that.
He said it. And it was decided that whatever the amount of funds was, it could be split up between all five districts in the amount of 37,000 and some change. I sat right there at that same meeting and stated, take the 7,000 or whatever it is, and put from each five districts, to make sure that somebody would leave with something. No decision was made. So it left, and it left right there dead where it was. The second time that it came up, then we started talking about, what Councilman DiVittorio is talking about, with the Discovery Center. Nothing was done from that moment. People been calling me, stating, asking questions, that they've been told that I was the holdup in the process. So to get the hold, me out of the loop of being the holdup in the process, I decided to put it on the agenda tonight. Either we're going to send this back to the committee and let them decide who's going to get what through the rubric process that they have, and move forward, or make a decision to give nobody nothing.
That clears that up. Thank you.
Vic Cuvialero, 802 Ruque. I'm just curious, I just want to know something. Way back before, most of you, most of you were probably still in high school. The voters in Hammond voted to approve bingo, because it was to, it was to fund the Discovery Center. And I know there was a lady on the council then who said, I'm against gambling, but because of this, I'll vote for it. I'm curious, is money still coming in from bingo? Is it even worthwhile anymore? And what was done, the city just decided to allocate that money to something else, it was not dedicated to the Discovery Center?
So there's two ways that it happens. We actually receive about a million dollars in revenue from the video bingo system annually. That is a 25% part of their big pool of money. In the past, before 2015, we did revise the ordinance in 2015. Part of the, of the city's money was going directly to the Discovery Center, whereas the other nonprofits pay for the staff and go run the bingo games and earn income based on that. And so we thought that that was an unfair process, because it was giving one nonprofit direct funds, but yet the other ones were required to work for those funds. So we changed...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to finish. We changed that ordinance so that the full 25% of the city's share all goes to capital improvements. So it goes to the infrastructure that Councilman Wells was just speaking about.
Can you explain that a little bit more, a little better, go back track, about the, in 2015, what changed now on that?
We changed the ordinance.
How did it write? How was it written?
So that the Discovery Center no longer got a specific amount of the city's share. Instead, all the city's share stayed with the city and was directed to capital improvements. And you'll see that in your budget. All the video bingo revenue is listed under capital improvements.
I was just curious, because I've never been in one of those bingo places, don't intend, I thought they were just about to dry it up. I was just curious.
But like he said, that's how, that's how the bingos were, that was one of the, the proposals, was to get it passed, was to get funding for the Discovery Center. Is, that's how, that's how that went?
Right.
That's how they were, that's how they...
So they got it, and then they changed it after when they got it.
That's how the council received four votes to be able to overturn the mayor's veto at that time.
Who was Mrs. Donut, what was her name? She was on the council at the time, and she said that, she goes, I would never vote for gambling, but if it's for the Discovery Center, not, no big deal. Hey, can I get off your agenda for one minute?
Oh, my gosh.
I am wearing my Superman shirt. We are going to have a cleanup. Keep Hammond beautiful. Here, please pass these out. I hope to see every one of you there for weekends out. If I'm out of line, tell me, kick me out, whatever.
Y'all have a good time. Y'all have best, and take up stairs and plenty of water. Y'all keep the hydrant ready.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Angela.
But no, for the, I'm going to say it again, the Children Museum, I'd like to give them 70,000. African American Museum, which is in District 3, I'd like to give them 70,000. UMX, which helped downtown a whole lot, I'd like to give them 3,000. And that'll, that'll kill it, because I asked you all to take that money out of that budget, and you didn't take that money out the budget, and I told you, it's going to come back and bite you. Now, here we are again, that was in July, and here we are now in September, discussing this again. So whatever we decide to do, I would like Tangier Parish, Heritage, Heritage Heritage Center, Black Heritage Center, in District 3, I would like for them to get 70,000. And the Children Museum, I would like for them to get, in which they are downtown, and a great part of downtown, helping the kids out and eating downtown, they even get haircut downtown. Give them 70,000. UMX, help downtown out a lot, get them awards, get them 3,000.
But you see, you know, my little deal is that a lot of energy and effort was put towards getting an agreement made with the Discovery Center to step them down, and that's fine, but there is no energy, motivation, or anything with all the other organizations that have a plan there. So they're moving downward, which is, that's fine, but other organizations, are they going to continue to move it up and down or whatnot? So what I'm getting at is, we got to, I mean, and I know it's sounding like I'm showing favoritism, but I don't care who it was, if it was African American Museum, if... If it was African American Museum, if it was, um, you know, UMX, if it was anybody, if they had an agreement that was already worked out. I know it's not set in stone because they gotta get approved every year. But if they already talked about and spent energy and time and effort on getting there or agreeing stepping down, well, you got one moving in the right direction. And then, so that's good. That should be one off the books that we know, hey, they settled. The other ones are still the, really, the, are the ones that need some direction on, on what's going on. Where are we trying to go with it? Are we trying to go up, down, stay the same, or what, you know? And so, uh, that, that's, that's my whole problem. That's why I don't really wanna hold them up. Because they already made their budget plan to do something that was already talked about for several years prior, prior to this. So, um, and that's nothing against any other organization or me saying I'm against any, it's just, it's just, that's, you know, I would feel the same way, no matter what organization was, that, that already had some talks of a direction of where they were going with their funding, so.
Okay. So that was the whole point of putting that committee together because it was stated that we didn't want that on our bank. If I'm...
Yeah, I was one of the ones pushing to keep them continuing to move to, to, to meet and, and, and get together when no really direction was even sent to them. And then now they, you know, they started meeting, but that, that was trying, that was almost being dissolved after last meeting. Every time a couple of the budget, you know, it, it, we talk about it and, and I, you know, and, and that's where it is. So now, yeah, they have a meeting that, you know, supposed to be meeting, you know, pretty regularly they've met, they got some plans on it. But like I said, you got a organization moving towards a budget moving down right now that are dependent on that money? That one is, is an easy, give them the money that they already done worked towards working their budget to, to work down to. That's, that's an easy one. I mean, that's, that's, that's it. I mean, and then I'm, you know, and then it needs to continue working on it. Because really, that was their proposal of grading scale, but it still didn't fix, fix the problem at, at, at the time that we have.
And ma'am, you said you needed money, huh? You ain't got to come back up here, but you need the money? Okay then, so it's, uh, and thank you for coming out, you know.
That's, that's councilman, that's, that's not my, my argument. I understand, and I'm not, I don't have an argument. My statement is basically this. If that was the case, we could've done that in June. We could've, we could, we could, we could've done that in June and been, been done with this. So if we sit here and you pull the trigger and do it that way now, it's not right to those other organizations, like she was asking about how many. That's not, that's, that's not fair if they have to go through the process.
None's really fair about the whole system because there, there's, there's no, there's no way all those organizations, I'm sure there's a hundred other organizations out there that deserve money too. So the whole system's broken because there's no way, you know, you can't tell me that there's other organizations out there that don't need the money. So that's, that's the problem there. That's why I really don't wanna mess or touch anymore because it's always the same every year. I know we got a policy made in place. We got, you know, board meeting about it, but, you know, that, that's fine. I mean, you think, then you all can say that the agreement that, that was discussed moving forward is just, forget about it. Don't worry about it. We, we won't worry about that one. So, I mean, that, that's fine. I mean, that, but I mean, I'm, I'm all for fix, all for continuing moving down one organization, the step plan. As, as they're on, that's already been discussed. No other organization has, in discuss any kind of step down plan at all. And that's what's the crazy part about it.
President Kippe, remember when I went back and said, let's take this money out this year budget? Can you recall that during the budget meeting? I said, let's take this hundred and forty-three thousand out. And Ms. Gonzalez said, no, leave it there. I said, this gonna come back and bite us. This hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. That's what we had now. But it's funny though, that we got a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in there now. But when I mentioned about those other groups, I just asked the question, how much money? Who all, how much money that they have received other than the city? I didn't get an answer. And now I asked about this here and we still don't have an answer. So I asked those other groups got money, but nothing said. Uh, what there was, uh, Crime Stoppers. I'm all for Crime Stop. The three groups that got money, it wasn't an issue. I asked about it from the administration. How much money that they don't receive other than from the city in Hammond? That's what I had asked. And, and you all know, uh, I didn't get an answer. So now we back at it again. Uh, it looks like we're gonna spend two more hours on a nonprofit that a group was set up to do this. And we gonna be at it until we get rid of the money.
Well, I, I don't, I think people would still be asking us for money whether it was funded or not. Uh, you know, everyone's used to the money. They think that the money is gonna go to nonprofits. I would suggest there's probably two ways, I mean, certainly three ways, uh, you know, Councilman Wells' proposal. Uh, also, we could have them fill out this, this, um, application that was given to us in May. And it's graded. It's a point system. Let's do that. And then we can either award the amount based on this, making sure everyone has their correct information. You know, their financials, tax returns, things that are required to have, make sure they're in good standing. Or we can ask the grants committee to do it, um, like originally intended. There's also another option, which is how it was before. We kind of changed everything, which is have the mayor propose how much he wants to give to everybody. And then we just stick with that.
Two, two options. The point system, the minority is not gonna receive it. The mass system, the minority is not gonna receive it. That be my concern when it comes to the minority. You keep hearing me say Tenth Pole Parish, African American Center. They not gonna receive it. If we go to two options that you said, last year, the two black organizations called Pierre D. Hale trying to receive money. So what I look like sitting up here, giving money to everybody else. And when somebody look like me, I supposed to keep my mouth closed like they don't exist. No, yes, I do have a problem with it. And we can get that money to everybody else. I ain't hear no point system for nothing else, but now I'm hearing the word point system. And it's amazing when the point system come up, it's a problem. You know, a hundred and forty-three thousand. You just bought a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar vehicle. Nobody forced to buy that. You just paid what, what's forty-five thousand dollars for a roof two weeks ago. Looked like it wasn't bid it out. Ain't nobody said nothing about that. Mr. David, every time he stand up and talk about something, it's a problem with the bids. But guess what? Not one time the administration ever said, well, let's sit down with Mr. David and see what we can do to help him out or, or, or to solve his problem with the bidding. You gonna always have a problem.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, Andre, or, or edit my, my deal here that I'm about to do. But I, I would like to make a motion tonight to, to fund the Children Discovery Center. There, there's seventy thousand dollars that was, uh, that was agreed upon, that, that was per cooperative endeavor agreement discussed prior with a step down plan. So I don't know if I need to go in that detail, but, but...
This is on the agenda for discussion. You need to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay.
And that would take an affirmative.
Okay.
Everybody.
That's fine, yeah. Well, I, I would make, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. To fund the, um, Children Discovery Center, the seventy thousand dollars that was, that was discussed with the administration in a cooperative endeavor agreement per contract. The seventy thousand dollars.
Second. That, and they got seventy-three thousand dollars left.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
So Andre.
Now you need a motion to approve it. What you've done is you've amended the agenda, so it's now on the agenda, whether to fund the Children's Discovery Museum for seventy thousand dollars.
So I'm gonna make the motion, I'm gonna make the motion to fund the Children Discovery Center, the seventy thousand dollars from the nonprofit budget.
And, and really to enter in a cooperative endeavor agreement.
And re-enter into the, the previous, the previous cooperative endeavor agreement that was agreed upon by both parties.
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
I'm staying.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Councilman Leon?
Aye.
So you know what I want?
Yep.
So you need to make a motion to amend the agenda if you wanted to have a cooperative endeavor agreement with another group.
Yes, I wanna make a, uh, motion to amend the agenda.
The African American Heritage Museum?
African American Heritage Museum.
Point out, this isn't a, a twenty thousand more than they got last year. And we could do a step down where everybody, where they get ten less than they got last year, just like the Discovery Center. Just pointing that out. Giving a twenty thousand dollar raise.
So how much you recommend giving them?
And we copy, if you were to copy the Discovery Center, they just take ten thousand less than the previous year, which was, I think, you gave them fifty last year.
Oh, they, they need it. Yeah, they need it. They, but they need it. They, they, they want one, one sixty. That's what they want. Well, we'll take ten out. Let's give them fifty thousand.
I think they had fifty thousand. I'm looking.
Yeah, but you can, I can't, they, they need it. You know, it's, it's in bad condition. They need it. Please.
What's the motion? This is, this is the motion to amend the agenda.
Yes.
We just need to figure out what amount you want.
Okay then. Make a motion to amend the agenda.
For what amount?
For a fifty thousand.
Second, yeah.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
It's amended, so now it'd be a motion to enter in a cooperative endeavor agreement with the African American Heritage Museum for fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's your motion.
Okay, I wanna make a motion for that.
Right.
Who's second?
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
I'm staying.
And Councilman Divertorio?
Aye. And the reason why I kinda paused a little bit, I was thinking, but I, I do definitely, my mood is still gonna stay the same, that we still need a game plan with all these organizations. And, uh, we need to be working towards the step down. And, uh, you know, so, so therefore, that's still how I feel. And I, I really think we, it's, it's a tough situation here we dealt with when you have a lot of nonprofits and everybody needs funding and everything. And, you know, it's just a, it's just a messy situation. So I'm all for stepping every, you know, one down and actually getting a good plan, you know, going forward. You, you know, we can talk with the, the board that, that we kind of made and try, so where they make sure, maybe we all need to meet with them to let them know where our feelings are to, you know, where they need to really be in direction of, of how they organize moving forward with, with funding nonprofits. And, and that there's a game plan to where we don't want everyone to be dependent on the city, but we don't mind. At least speaking for myself, I don't want everybody to be dependent on the city. But I don't mind helping out organizations to get them on their feet, to get where they need to go to provide services for the citizens. So I'm all for that, but we, we really need to be cautious of how we doing it. And, and I have a lot of needs in my district, drainage, streets, everything else. And then, you know, that's what the taxpayers really care about, and the lighting and, and everything else. So, uh, you know, um, so yeah, that's just kind of where I feel on, on the deal. And my mood still stays the same, that we really need to really start looking hard at, at these organizations and really putting some focus on them.
And how much they have left in the, in that, uh...
Twenty-three thousand eight ninety-three. We can roll that back into the beginning fund balance and actually spend it on city things.
Okay, that's a good idea. Yeah, and that'll keep this from taking place again.
Can we just leave it and then we'll do an ordinance change for the, to roll it in? Do we have to introduce an ordinance to remove the rest of the money and put it out, or just leave it in the budget item?
How much is it?
Twenty-three thousand eight ninety-three.
Better take it out.
You can do it either way. Last year, you actually left, I think it was about thirty-three thousand in the nonprofit line item. And it just, at the end of the budget year, it goes back to the fund balance unless it is spent.
When will we have budget amendments where we have to fix what?
We typically don't do any of those, um, until January, after we have finished the audit.
Just leave it there till January.
Well, you know somebody else, somebody gonna come back up here.
I'm, I, I'm...
The, the council has in its purview to de-obligate the funds, to basically pull them back.
Do we have to do it by ordinance? Can we do it?
You would, you would need to do that by ordinance because it would change it.
Yeah, just introduce it at the next meeting.
All right.
Number eleven?
A just discussion of a change to the city charter for the election of the police chief, Councilman Wells.
Thank you. Uh, once again, we discussed it last week. I mean, we discussed it two weeks ago. And I think President Kippe and I, I think we the only ones turned something in. Mr. Andre, you wanna speak on it?
Uh, yes, y'all, y'all did, uh, suggest some items which were, uh, generally included. I prepared in red print discussion draft because it's a work in progress. Because as you see, there's still lots of issues that you guys need to sort out. I tried to stay generally consistent with other elected officials under the charter. But there are some things, um, that you guys need to talk about. Particularly what is the authority for the chief to operate the department? The budgetary authority of the council we talked about? Whether the mayor has a veto authority of the budget? Vacancies and if there's an absence in the position of police chief? What makes it a little complicated is the assistant chief is actually civil service. The, the police chief is not. So there are, there are rules of civil service with classification plans for the assistant chief. So we've got to be careful. We couldn't just say, for example, if there's a vacancy in the office of police chief after one year. The assistant chief can't serve for three years, so you have to go to an election. He could be temporarily there, uh, to serve the function. So what we tried to do was avoid having two elections in one year, one for the vacancy and one for the full term. So, uh, that's all, now all that detail's in there. All that detail needs to be, uh, fully reviewed and talked about. But I have, as requested, put something on paper. Actually, the qualifications would need to be, be sure that's what you want. Salary would be something you need to look at.
Terms, I guess. It's, it's terms on there, 'cause...
Yeah.
I'm, you know, uh, I, you know, uh, I, I definitely, you know, would concentrate on terms of...
Patterned after the other elected officials, a four-year term, three, three maximum term.
Can, can, that should be able to differ, I mean, if it's, it should be able to differ, don't have to be the same, as in like, it could be a max of two terms, of three.
None of this has to be the same.
Yes, I'm saying, it don't have to be along with the city.
No, sir. I just tried to pattern what's already there for elected official. But it's all up there for discussion. Now you've got something to look at and to, uh, discuss and make comment about.
And that's, uh, and that's what I was pretty much looking at. I was looking at for as the qualification of being a city councilman. Qualification of being a mayor. So that's how I base my things on, the stuff that I sent you.
Well, the big difference is, like, for example, for mayor and for council, you have an age limit, an age. You've gotta be a certain age. Well, for the police chief, if you're gonna have so many years of qualifications, well, you, you're gonna be in your forties at least. Um, if you want fifteen years or twenty years of, uh, experience. So, so that is a little bit different because it's different being a, a, a councilman and mayor compared to a, a, a job like police chief. You'd want someone with experience, it seems to me, to be the police chief.
Yeah, so, uh, President Kippe, I, I think President Kippe, he sent some stuff in also.
He did, and that's included in here.
Okay, so what we can do is, I mean, everybody, you can give, uh, I'd like to get a copy.
I, I can give you a hard copy. I sent it out by email.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to get a hard copy of it and we can go from there. But, okay, thank you. Just see you got me one. Okay. Yeah, 'cause we not gonna sit here and let a... Yeah, because we're not going to sit here and let a age stop us from doing this here process, we're not going to stop, we're not going to let a salary stop... President Kip, what salary did you send in?
Hundred and five thousand dollars.
Okay.
I, I took my time out with the information that I sent to Mr. Koochran. I looked at two major cities in the state of Louisiana, and I looked at four other cities close to our population. I based it off of their qualifications, that they were asking for their police chief. I based it off of the salary range that they were showing for their police chief, and other information that I saw that I sent to Mr. Koochran, that he actually placed on here.
Okay.
So I'm quite sure, I know that some of this other stuff we're going to have to work through to get it ironed out. But I didn't rush into this, I took my time every night when I went in, and I looked at a different department. I went from New Orleans, Baton Rouge, Alexandria, Lake Charles, Lafayette, Ruston, Louisiana. And based my information off that I pulled and I presented to him.
Yeah, okay, well, that's good to know. And that being said, uh, uh, Mr. Andre, you see the homework is being done. So now, we hear, I hear a age limit now, so...
No, sir, there's no age, so I was, I was trying to contrast it, so for, for council members and the mayor, there's an age limit.
Okay.
You have to be twenty-five years or older to run for office.
Okay.
For police chief, you could put that in here if you want, but it seems to me, you're going to want someone with substantive experience.
Yeah.
And if you're going to have fifteen years of experience, you're going to be over twenty-five years of age.
Okay, well...
So I, so I do not have an age limit in here, it's just experience.
Okay.
Probably smart, probably to just add it in, even though I know the experience thing, I mean, I, I mean, I don't...
Man, that's something certainly you guys can talk about.
Well, thank you so much, uh, we can't keep discussing it.
We need to discuss it.
Well, that's, but you know what, though? It was set out, and this is what I do. I make sure everybody can get it, whatever I say. Well, we can discuss it or whatever, and everybody have opportunity to send anything they want, because I think every time I did an email, uh, councilman, President Kip was on there also, and Andre. So we can all read what's been said and what's taking place, and I know from you, ma'am, it'll be an issue, but...
I, I, I have, I have a couple of questions that I would like to...
No, it's fine.
To ask. It's a good, it's a good starting point, but there's a couple of things that I'm just kind of curious about. The first and foremost is the, it says, department, the police department should be department within the city, subject to the budgetary authority of the city council by ordinance and allocation. So it's obviously a very different operation, having an elected police chief who is the one who's over all of his employees. We currently have a lot of control over the police department. Do we keep and maintain that control with the budget? And is the way it's written, does the police chief have some discretioncy about, discrepancy about how he wants to spend things? Does he still have to come to us for every twenty-five thousand dollar item? And it does say the mayor should have no veto authority over the bu, the budget of the police department. So for instance, if I read this the way it is, we set the budget, they have to come to us for certain things. Say you have a council that doesn't like a police chief, a, elected police chief is way harder to get rid of, even though it was said in here that we could just easily get rid of him. An elected police chief or any elected official is very difficult to get rid of. So let's say we get into a circumstance where this council hates the police chief. We could completely defund the police department, and the mayor doesn't have the veto authority over it, and we could just do whatever we wanted. So am I reading that correctly, in that the council pretty much could control the police department using the budget?
Yes.
Of an elected police chief?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's an issue I just wanted to bring up and point out and have us think about. The police chief exercises general executive and administrative authority over the department, its employees. So first of all, are the police officers, are they still employees of the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, in the way this is drawn, they're, it's still a department of the city.
Right.
It's just administered by an elected department head.
Okay, so would the council still retain the authority to have investigations into any employee?
Yes.
We currently have that in the charter, that if there's something that we could investigate an employee, that's not going to cause any issues with an elected police chief, being that the elected police chief has the authority over his employees?
No, not if it's an investigation of a violation of city policy or city ordinance.
Okay. Another issue, the police chief being actually domiciled in the city for two ye, twenty-four months before they qualify for office. Just pointing out that the current charter has that the mayor and the council all have to be there for twelve months. So we're making it a, you know, a stricter residency requirement of twenty-four. I get the point, I understand why you would do that, but let's think about if you're trying to get the most qualified person, and their qualifications are quite rigorous, which I appreciate. Does this whittle down who is appropriate? If I read this, if this passed, my understanding is probably maybe two, three people who would even qualify to be able to, to be a police chief under this. The, the qualifications for the police chief as written here are a BA with twenty years of law enforcement and fifteen years of administrative supervisory responsibilities, or a BA with fifteen years of supervisory. It was pointed out to me that it takes about sixteen years to become a sergeant in HPD, which is what gives you your administrative supervisory responsibilities. So therefore, you couldn't have, you know, it'd be very difficult for someone in HPD, if they wanted to run for police chief. You know, they'd have to basically be there for thirty years before they're able to even run for police chief. That might be good or bad, I don't know, but let's, we're just pointing out that giving, having someone have at least fifteen years of supervisory responsibilities could be difficult with the hierarchy of how our promotion and rank system works. The current charter says you have to have six years' experience or eight years' experience with two years in admin. That might be too low, so that's something for us to consider of whether we move that around a little bit. And then finally, not that this is my only critiques of this, but the police chief with a salary of a hundred and five thousand, does this include, is it automatic retirement, health insurance, and those types of things? And is there any promotions or, you know, earning more, or is it set, like the mayor's, is set, and there's no raise every year? So you work for twelve years, you're only making a hundred and five thousand?
So it's intended for the council by an ordinance to allow for benefits other than salary.
So again, if you have a council that really hates your police chief, you could just say you get a hundred and five thousand dollars and you can just carry on with your life?
No doubt, no doubt. And then, in the way it's set up, just like the other salaries, the council can change the salary by an ordinance, but you just can't do it in the last year of a term, just kind of like we have, we're speaking some other places.
That's just...
Look, it's a big, those are big questions.
Yeah.
You know, all of these are big questions, and to submit this to the voters, you know, any one of those questions could be objectionable to voters and vote the whole thing down. So it's, it's, it's something that I, I mean, I think it takes a lot of eyes on it to look at.
I just think that two, you know, just one thing that we, we need to keep focused and keep in mind on as we look at all of this is, this person will be elected by the will of the people. He will be, he or she will become police chief by the will of the people. So to limit, to limit those people seeking office, having to be in, having to be in the city limits of Hammond. I think you brought, I think you have to broad, I think you have to broaden that scope. Again, I understand the intent, but you also have to understand it's an election. If the person, if the person has the qualifications, is well-liked, and, and gains the respect of the people, why does it matter where they live within reason? And the city of limits may be a very narrow scope on that. Just, just some thoughts.
It's, it's much different than a council member of the mayor, like you said, that's more of a professional focused job. And the tension becomes, you want somebody local who knows the area, but are you limiting your pool too much? And that's a, there's no easy answer to that.
I guess maybe a suggestion would be somehow set it up to where, when, if it, you know, if it comes back or whatnot, to where you, you kind of, for instance, put some of your concerns more of like a punch list vote, as in, there may be some, be some things in here that, you know, I, I may want to, that I want to change or whatnot. Well, you know, that doesn't mean I agree with everything, but I may agree with some things, but that doesn't mean that all, everybody agrees to one thing and, and everything. So what I'm getting at is, it'd be nice, I think we've done it before, where you almost kind of, you know, you don't need to maybe break it down to every single line, but some proposal, maybe amendments to the actual...
So what you want to do when you're ready to get some consensus, and then once there's a consensus...
Yeah.
You could amend it, right? Amend item D to remove the...
Yeah, but, but...
...that you have to be elected. That's how you, the process would be to get to the final...
I was trying to get a setup where some, 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 some main points in here that are maybe controversy or whatnot, maybe be more of a already outlined proposal of an amendment maybe, or something, before a meeting to where it's a little more organized, to where it's not back and forth.
Well, this is a discussion draft, so, so this is, this is for, for you to chew on.
Yeah.
And then, and then it would be all comments, all, you know, thoughts. It's hard for me to put into one ordinance when I've got three different versions coming from three different council members. So that's what's tough, I'm looking for consensus on things that you might all agree on, and then place that in here, and then you start taking the hard votes on those other things that there may not be unanimous agreement on. And then you just vote, and then you vote, and then, you know, if it passes, it passes. And then goes up for a vote of the people.
Vic Kubio, eight oh two, Ruquean. I've been giving this a whole lot of thought, and there's, of course, to state the very obvious is, there's something to say about both systems. But having thought about this, there's several things. First of all, when I was sitting here earlier when there was discussion, people were saying, if we elect a police chief, we'll have no problems, everything will be just perfect. Don't believe it. You would hope that you could elect a person who had the spirituality of Mother Teresa, the wisdom of Solomon, and the vision and compassion of Martin Luther King Jr., but you're not going to get that. All of us have feats of clay. In fact, if you won't look no further than Amity, if you remember a couple of years ago, they elected a police chief, nice guy, very nice guy, very popular. He didn't even serve a year before the federal government came in and sent agents. He was arrested, charged with buying votes, had to leave office, had to pay a big financial penalty, and I think he, he was let out of jail time. And a good man, but he was convicted of buying votes. So there is no guarantee that if you elect a man, he's going to be better. My concern is this, the way the system works with an appointed chief is, you have the first layer, you hope you have a conscientious mayor who really diligently searches for the best candidate. Maybe he doesn't even live in town, but the best candidate. Then you have to say so, after the mayor recommends, you don't have to approve that, you have control over that. If you turn it over to an election, you lose all your control. He can stand up here and say, I don't care what y'all say, the people, I answer to the people. Now, I know that such a thing is recall, but you look at the people spend thousands of dollars and thousands of hours trying to recall the mayor of New Orleans, and they failed. So in a sense, you are surrendering some of your control over an elected official. He has his own little king, once he's elected, I answer to the people, I don't answer to you. So that's something to really consider, and I think that's something that the voters have to be made aware of also. As I say, there, there is merit on both sides, but once you politicize the position, which is exactly what's going to happen, let's face it, in politics sometimes it's good old boy. And one other thing I was telling a lady last time, she said, if I, if I might be the best qualified woman in the world to be police chief, but I could never win an election because people are going to say, a woman just can't be a good police chief, I'd never have a chance to win. That's something to consider too, there are so many things to consider. I trust your wisdom, and I trust the wisdom of the people, because they have to approve a change to the, to the charter, right, Andre? But the people need to be told what both sides of the story are, as always. And with trouble with the world we live in today is this, you can be arrested on Twitter, indicted on TikTok, and then in the almighty Supreme Court of Facebook, you can be found guilty. And unfortunately, perception is greater than the truth. And we have to be careful about that, because once this process starts, just watch all the incredible experts that are going to be on Facebook making their statements. I'll never forget when Dr. Pelche, the head of the doctor at North Oaks, told our Kiwanis Club, he said, thousands and thousands of people died because they consulted Dr. Facebook instead of their own doctor. So this is going to be quite, quite something if you go through with this. So I'm just suggesting, I'm only one citizen, that you give this a lot of thought. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Andre, I had a question about the wording, is the, is the domiciled in for other elected officials?
Double check that.
Actually resided.
Actually resided, so domiciled was pulled from other police chiefs in others. So you've got the whole, we talked about the Laurison Act, and that's why so many places have elected police chiefs. And I went back and actually, when I looked at the statute, they amended it twenty-nine times, because twenty-nine cities changed from an elected police chief to an appointed police chief. But, but that's a, a good question, Lacey, domicile and residency is two, two entirely different things. Two different things.
Jean Voorhees, twelve oh one, South Holly Street in Hammond. I'd like to present the other side of the picture from my friend, Mr. Vic. Actually got it written down. I am strongly in favor of letting the people of Hammond select their cha, their chief of police. We elect the mayor and the council because the decisions you make greatly affect our personal lives. The police also have great power over our lives. They are not like the water department and the street department. They should not be considered as just another part of the city administration under the control of the mayor. The police are hired to protect the citizens of Hammond. But they can handcuff us, they can arrest us, they can search us, they can search our homes. This is a tremendous amount of power. As a control over that great power, the people should have a voice in selecting the chief of police. I believe we should join our fellow citizens in the surrounding communities in giving the people the right to, to elect their own chief of police. And I hear what Vic said, and there's no such thing as a perfect way to get a perfect leader of any sort. We all know that, we live, we're big boys and girls, we live in the real world. There are scoundrels, there are rotten people, there are also some very good people. And you have to trust somebody somewhere along the line. And personally, I'd prefer to put my trust in the people, because there's a darn many of them. And they argue with each other, and, and they discuss things, and they have different views, and we have lots and lots of ways to communicate. And I believe that if you're going to have to trust somebody, I would rather trust the people. And then, if we end up with a chief of police that we can't stand, I, I think the people of Hammond have enough backbone to organize and fuss and get together and launch a campaign and get that bugger out. And I know, I know, maybe I sound like a Pollyanna, but I believe in the people. I'm a Democrat, and I believe the power of the people and in the voice of the people. And I think that... And I think that position of the chief of police is so powerful over our personal lives. And I speak now for many of my black friends. They're probably not gonna bother an old white woman. I'm probably gonna be treated with a fair amount of, of respect and with, with gentle hands. But I have a lot of black friends who are not treated that way. And for their sake, they need to have a voice. They need to be able to say, "This person can be in charge of the people that would have a gun and will be chosen to, to protect me," because that gun goes both ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jean.
Michael Shalhous, President in AAACP. Couple of quick things that I have, President Kip. Real quick, why do people have to give their address when they come before the council?
Public record.
Public record. Shouldn't, shouldn't have to, right?
It's very customary to do that.
Well, given the time and the sensitive area that we're in, I, I don't think people should have to come up and give their full name and their address because of...
So much going on in the world.
And this is aired on YouTube. So I, I will ask the council to consider suspending people giving their address and their full names out. It, it, it just shouldn't happen, not in today's time. It is, it is PII together. So you can say, "My name is Michael, I'm from District One." What's wrong with that? But I, I digress. I ask that the council take a, a good look at that and consider that. Because I did last, attend last meeting here, and people were afraid because they didn't want to give their address. And I don't blame them. So let's, let's, let's take a look at that, President Kip. So I am in favor because of the phone calls that I've received regarding the chief of police. Certainly in favor. I think these rules, or whatever this is, resumes or whatever, is a little bit too strict. We need to widening, we need to widen the net to, to be able to elect a chief efficiently. I mean, 15 years, bachelor's degree, looks like you're trying to exclude some people. Looks like you're trying to do a point system. You know, if, if, if I could say that. It, that's what it looks like. Every city in Tanjapoh, Paris, Punchetula, Independence, Amy, Roseland, Village of Tanjapoh, Kentwood, is elected, all elected chiefs. Why is Hammond so different? The sheriff is elected. Why is Hammond so different? So we, and Ms. Jean, you're absolutely right, and thank you for your comments. We need an elected chief here in Hammond. All right? And, and so these, these rules, bachelor's degree, that's just too strict. You're limiting your pool. You're limiting your pool. We need to take a round turn on this.
What would you suggest?
What would I suggest?
For qualifications?
I would certainly take a look at what the qualifications that are now for sheriff. Do they have to have a bachelor's degree?
I don't know.
Do they have to have 15 years of experience? Do they have to have 20 years of, of experience in law enforcement and public? What is the standard here in Tanjapoh, Paris? That's what we need to be looking at. What's the standard? And if the standard is this, well then, you know, go with that. But if this is above and beyond the standard here in Tanjapoh, Paris, we need to get rid of this. And look at the standard in Tanjapoh, Paris, because we're here in Tanjapoh, Paris, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is an odd story. I, I do think that some discussions should be around this, in-depth discussions, but we need to be able to elect. The people have to have a voice. They have to have trust in their police department. Right now, for the last two incidents, and I have to go back, because, listen, and, and I'm glad that I found out today that the FBI is taking over the case. I, I thanked the Daily Star, but I wish I would've found that out from the administration. Because this is what the citizens call and ask me. But nobody called, but I, I digress on that. So it, it's good that the FBI said, but we go back to the Ratliff case. We was told that the FBI was investigating that case. And where's the paperwork? How could I trust the system? Is there some paperwork? Is there documentation that says that the FBI have control of this case? Who do we need to call at the Department of Justice to say that the FBI have control of the case? Who? Can anybody tell?
No, sir, I would just call the Department of Justice, the New Orleans Department.
You've been talking to them, right?
Yes.
Okay, so who can we call? Who have you been talking to?
I, I am not authorized to give out names, I'm not authorized to speak for the FBI. All I can tell you is what I've done and transmitted to them. And, and really, Michael, I can't, I just can't divulge that information. You'd have to get that from them.
Okay, well, I, we'll, we'll, we'll call. But is there anything in writing? Because again, I go back to...
Yes, there, there's a transmittal.
There's a transmittal?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, because I go back to the Ratliff case, and we said that the FBI was investigating. And come to find out, that's no paperwork, that's nothing. So I don't want this case to end up like the Ratliff case. It's shitting, okay? But beyond that, give the voters an opportunity to select who they want to be the chief. Thank you.
Also, the sheriff has no restrictions, they just have to have lived in the parish for two years, literally, like, not even a college education.
Uh, thank you, President Kip, for giving me the opportunity to put this on the agenda. And we'll move forward, but yet we can't keep coming up with these discussions. Because before you know it, we'll be making these discussions for another four years. And we have issues right now. So once again, any information you have, anything you want on there, send it to Mr. Andre, and we can't keep coming up with all these drafts.
And you should copy all the other council members too, that's my suggestion.
I agree with you.
Everybody's in a loop with, with all the conversations.
That makes sense. Thank you. But I think last time, I said, we brought it up for discussion, so it was, it was said last time. Anything you have to say, anything you want to say, it can be sent out, you know, sent it to you, put all the councilmen on there, and we'll know what's going on. And that's how it should be, it's amazing how you said that, and it makes sense. That's what we need with everything going on with the city. Send it out where everybody will know, not just one person. Everybody will know, and we'll be on the same page, and we won't have a problem, you know? These guys here with the bidding process, we got a problem. So, you know, if everybody knew what was going on, it'd eliminate these long council meetings. You know, I'm looking at the time now, so it'll eliminate. Yeah.
You know, one thing you said in, it's, like I said, it's one way or the other, but right now, at least the people of Hammond will, will have a choice, okay? They have a choice to vote. And that's the only thing that we really have nowadays, is a choice to vote. So I'm all in favor of the chief being, you know, elected. So I'd ask the council to work it out, and with the administration here. And I know the, Mr. Andre has got, has a lot of hands, you know, into, into this, but he's our advisor, so y'all all just have to get together and, and work with Mr. Andre and the, and the mayor, and, and for the city of, of Hammond, the people. That's what counts, the people, and that's what we need to do. Our job. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Seth.
Mayor, report.
Thank you. Again, Alex Martinez with Pride Roofing. The bidding process, that's what I, I got stopped, and I'm sorry to interrupt whatever I did, but if you don't speak, I get to hear, you know, nobody go. If you're not doing this and come over here and interrupt, there never gonna be an agenda, let's be realistic. And we got plenty, he's a contractor as well, like I am. Believe me, I crossed some mounds though to pass those tests though, and I finally came a GC, a general contractor. But last, last meeting, then they was talking about the metal roof. And we saw what happened, we saw the video, like I said, I was in my house looking at it. And that's when we made some call the next morning. We just wanted to verify and make sure and understood that we're doing the right things though. And when we make those calls, everybody started pointing the chief of, of the fire department. That he maybe was nervous here, he don't know what to say, he don't know anything about roofing. But my thing is, why you put a man on that, on those positions though? Why that, that don't change the bidding process? That every general contractor that go bid a project, let them email a closed folder, and they can bring their own copy, and make all you contractors that are bidding the job come to the meeting though? That when you, when you guys open those file, I mean, those folders, you see who's bidding, who's low, and whatever offer the best, I guess that they'll go be the one that the be, that'll win the project. But like, somebody showing here, like the chief of police, he said, "Hey, with this, the only bid that we got, who got the approvals that they put there for bid, and who got the approval that they're the lowest bid?" If nobody see those numbers, so maybe you guys saw, and they will let the public see it as well. But if you open those files here in every meeting, I think you're not gonna have no bad feelings. Because we, we wanna compete with a local contractor, like Mr. David, he's, he's a contractor. If he bid against me, and he opened his file here, I'm happy though. We just waiting for, we just want an opportunity, that's all. But there need to be a fair and a friendly competition though with all the local contractors though. But if we, we don't see it, we have all the rights to believe whatever we want on that point.
So what were you saying, the last bidding on the roof? Did y'all get opportunity to bid on that roof?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, now why, why wouldn't they have gotten an opportunity to bid on the roof? Because we only had one bid on the roof, was that true, was that correct? Did I remember that right, or no? I can't remember.
I don't, only one bid, it looks like, was received. I'm looking at the packet, and I can pull it up on the computer.
I, I looked at it earlier, she sent it to three or four people, and had been, put proof that she'd sent it. Pride Roofing was not on it, but she did send it to three or four people, and only one responded. That's, that's what the packet had.
Yeah. And you see where I got a, I got a problem with that, I've always had a problem with that, is that I don't see how, you know, roofs, my God, there's roofing companies all over the place, they're everywhere. So what I'm getting at is, we gotta get better at getting the word out to get more bids for these projects. I don't see how we only get some of these bids, one bid, two bids. I mean, it's just really, I just cannot understand. Now, I understand the standards. They all need to have some standards. They all need to have some, you know, they need to have qualifications, meet a certain level of, of quality of work. That's, I'm all for that, but we gotta get better. There's too many contractors around here, and, and I don't see how Pride wasn't on there, or any big company like that around here. Not just using him because he's here, but they should've had more than two or three people for roofs. And why is that?
It, it may be the contract, Jana's not here, so I can't tell you 100%, but this may be the contractors who have registered to receive bids, so...
We do, we, yeah, we, we registered.
You were registered.
When I became involved with it, when I had a call from you, and then we talked as well, I looked into it, Jana pulled up their vendor sheet, and for some reason, the checkbox that they checked was about repairing. And for some reason, for, no, that's not negative, I saw it. So for some reason, she took that as not to send them a package, apparently, because it wasn't new, they didn't check the box new. For whatever reason...
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna see that in a minute, so go ahead and finish.
For whatever reason, she didn't send them a, a package. So as I told them, y'all had, y'all had approved, it, it's, you know, it's, it's being done, right? Anytime, next time we have bids now, and I invited you to go meet with Jana and talk with her, and let her know exactly what you do, and for the next time, when we, because we have a lot of roofs, we'll have more jobs, that they will be, they will send out bids. So that's where, when it came to me, that's where we went, and I'm glad to hear that you did go visit with her and talk to her as well.
So now...
And, and we understood that, and it probably was, we can say there was a mistake on those papers. But the thing is, when we make the call the next morning, and we ask Ms. Jana, that actually I never met, it's my first time seeing her over here, and she clearly said on the phone that she do not put that for bids because she don't have to, because it's under $60,000 a bid, I mean, project. So that never went for bid, she even admitted that, okay? And they, and they said that, now they said, I don't know what they believe. And like I said first before though, I'm not here to make bad ways, all right? I'm here to do things right, and I think that if we allow you guys, I mean, the local contractors and the public to see who the bidding is against, I think they go save all these though.
And you see, that's, that's what I want too. I want fair, across-the-board deal. And you see, what I don't like is, is y'all saying one thing, he's saying another thing, okay? And what I don't like is, I didn't like voting for that in the first place, it could've seemed bad, but if I would've voted no to that, they would've said I was against the fire department. Not, not that I, not that I was against the process, I'm against the process, not the fire department. I have no problems with the fire department. They need a new roof, get a new roof. I want the process to be handled correctly, and I want the bids, and I don't want 10 different stories up here about what was happening. I just don't understand, just like demolition, tearing down the wrong houses. It's, I mean, it's pretty simple, bid out, put a sticker on it, paint it pink, whatever you need to do to make sure there, that's the house to tear down, not the wrong house. I just don't understand how something that bold, just like sending out a bid. So let me, Alex, sorry. Now, what's your name, sir?
Mike Tarday. I guess his partner's with him.
Okay.
Pride Roofing and Crown Metals.
Yeah. So now, you're saying the check was checkbox or not checkbox? What, what are we talking about?
Now, I met with the young lady this morning, and she said...
Was the original?
This is the original. Roofing installation plus roofing materials, because we own Crown Metals, so we sell, we extrude, we make panels. So that, that, and the, apparently the fire chief, and I listened to that video.
Get in the mic, where they can hear you.
I listened to the video. And now, of course, he's a fire, he's not a roof. But he was saying that was a complex roof panel, and that's why there weren't many bids. We make it right down the road. We make it right down the road, we make numerous, we extrude metal, we make the panels. We make it. And we're right down the road, nobody, we just talked building next to the Kate Street Seafood. We're gonna put, we're moving everything we have over right down the road.
So, so, so Mayor, I just want, can you explain why, why we got a confusion here with this? I'm just, I'm not coming at you, but I really want to understand why.
When I got brought into it, I looked into it, I told her to send me what she had. I saw the sheet, the application, and the only X mark I saw was the repla, the repair.
Roofing installation, that's what it says.
Roofing installation, roofing materials.
That's right. That's it.
Well, I think the problem is, and Mr. David, I'm so glad, and see, just like Jana said, she wasn't gonna stay. Jana don't realize she work for the city. She said she wasn't gonna stay, and she showed y'all she wasn't gonna stay. So right here, now we going back and forth, what Jana said, what he said. We don't even know the story, because guess what? She didn't stay to hear what they had to say. And we have a problem, we know we got a problem. So the best way to solve this here problem, everybody need to sit down, get together, do these bids for the locals and everybody else. That point system, we see how that point system work. The point system is not gonna work in nobody's favor when I don't like you. The point system is not gonna work. When do we ask a contractor to turn in all your employees? When do we ask that? We don't know all the employees work for the city of Hammond. We don't know their background, and, and, and we get into, now we're gonna run into an issue because we got human resource... cause we got a human resource that's supposed to stay in Hammond and still not in Hammond. So we better watch when we do stuff, but you get these subcontractors trying to get jobs through the city of Hammond. They not asking you to give them nothing. They just wanna see, Chuck can sit here and open all the packages right over there where Andre at and everybody can see the bid. Now all of a sudden, Jana, I don't know how the process work, but the bids be open, but nobody see the bid. So guess what? If Jana like Mr. Kip, she give Mr. Kip the job. And this here man said something, he didn't even get this in his package, but guess what? They can't go back and forth with her, cause she not even here. But we have a issue, but yet when it come to the ragly houses, once again, now two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars. We sit there, Mr. Mayor, you was with us, we sit here and come up with a solution on how to do the bidding process over a two thousand dollar house or three thousand dollar house, but yet now the city councilman don't even have control when a bid going out for twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand, forty-five thousand. Every bid should come before the city councilman, any bid over ten thousand dollars or more should come before the city councilman and these issue be solved. That's why we got so many problems, cause these stuff is being done behind closed doors and nobody know what's going on but Jana and administration. And it's timeout, the, the lady asked, be fair, let it go up before the citizen. You gave us a job to do, let us do our job, let it come before the councilman, anything over ten thousand dollars and everybody a note, why these guys got to come here and for one second, they almost didn't get a chance to speak? He had to get up and speak out of turn in order to be heard. But he sit here and heard everybody, the presentations, everybody got something and that man said through the whole process. And now you gonna tell him he got three minutes to do some talking, but yeah, Jana not even here. We do have a issue, we know we got a issue. And it don't make sense, this issue could have been solved a long time ago, it ain't just come up. Mr. Sal speak about it all the time, do we have a local contractor? Do we have a local contractor? Did you see, did you look for a local contractor? No, but we don't wanna hear what Mr. Sal say. But it's amazing how these people making good sense and now all of a sudden, we don't wanna hear. I appreciate y'all taking time out, man, cause you know what? It would have never got solved if y'all wouldn't have been here. Mr. David came up here three times and Ms. Jana, and, and, and I don't know what's going on, sit there and told him, he lost the bid. When do we talk like that to people? We have to do better as a councilman, as administration, as a mayor, we all have to do better because guess what? These are same people that vote for us. When you looking for money for your election, guess what? You in they face. Now that you done got they money, and, and I heard somebody talk about buying votes. That's why I want this election to come up during a federal, when the, when the president come up, cause guess what? If you get caught buying votes, now you go to jail. So that's a good thing about it, thank you so much, fellas. Yeah, yeah.
It's a coincidence, we went look at a job, I think you went Saturday too, over at the, um, the airport. Had a job come out to go redo a building and she added us in, me and Pride Roofing. You know, I, I found that kind, you know, kinda coincident. Like I said, at the end of the day, I'm not trying to sit here and beg for no job. I sit there and I went that, you know, when I look at her, open the mail up, but I'm looking for numbers. I mean, if she'd have showed me the numbers right up front that everything was good, I'm cool with that. But this happened more than one time, more than one occasion, and I'm just sick of it. I, I rather for, look, hey, if you gonna open up there, like I said, ten thousand dollars or more, let's do it. But let's open up in a setting like this and let's move forward. Don't sit behind closed door, you're your sec, you're your, um, your assistant and then when I leave out, who knows what you do?
So, uh, uh.
Look, I could tell you before, Arco, they could not beat my numbers. And that's why if you go through that contract, you'll see all she did to make sure that she cover her tracks.
Hey, one other thing, remember he brought up about the airport? Why you think we got that email, you got seventy-two hours, there's an airport job. Why you think we got that email? We never got emails before, even though we were on that list, I just showed you the list.
Yeah, yeah.
Why you think? Because I called him, I raised, we raised hell because of the roof over at the fire department.
Yeah.
So then they reacted to that and then she sent us an email, oh, there's something going on at the airport.
Yeah.
Seventy, you got seventy-two hours, we got, we only got the email because we raised hell.
Yeah, well, that, that, that's why I wanted to figure, Andre, is there a way? We gotta have a better process on there, can, can you look at things and we can get something drawn up?
Let me say this, so, so to avoid confusion, there's a public bid law which, which has minimum requirement. So if it's for materials and supplies, if it's over sixty thousand dollars, it's gotta be publicly bid. If it's construction, over two hundred and fifty thousand, it's gotta be publicly bid. You can't, yeah, you can't mess with the public bid law, that is, that is strict. That you, you, you can't make, change the rules, that's set by state statute, it's all done. What we're talking about is RFPs, request for proposals. And, and you have more flexibility with a request proposal. Now, good practice is, you send it out to multiple people to bid so you get a fair price. And that's what we're talking about, that process for the RFP. Now, once, once it's determined and RFP goes out and someone's identified, maybe the low bidder, if it certainly is for a public contract, but if it's for an RFP, it comes to you and you vote on it.
Then, let's, I know I vote on it, I know I voted, but what I'm letting you know is, I don't wanna vote when I got one bid. What I'm saying is, I want a better system of the RFP process because I don't wanna have somebody who doesn't receive an email one time and then they receive. So I want a process guideline of a guideline system that actually is in place. So we avoid all this every time.
Well, there's a process in place, it's just not working very well. Because apparently there's a list of contractors that, that everyone should know to be on, right? And you can, you can register with the city.
There's three ways that this happens, so there's three different kind of tentacles to how, how a bid goes out. One is a list of registered contractors and once you're put on there, it sounds like there was a horrible mistake made on yours. Correct, but it sounds like that mistake hopefully has been corrected, we can double check those records in the morning.
Everything we do as a company, it's a lot of things.
I understand, right. So that's one way that people get notified that there is a project out for bid or out for proposal or request for pricing. A second way is it's posted up on the city's website. Yes, it is. Okay.
I look at it every, every day before I leave to go work, I look at it every day. You just had it up not long ago and it's not, nothing on there now.
It wouldn't be posted up now because it's not an open call.
And I'm just saying.
Once the call closes, it comes off of the website because you don't want to continue to give bidders the impression that you are accepting bids.
I understand that, but I'm gonna tell you like this, I look at it every day. And a lot of these jobs, just like the airport job, we went looked at, we had seventy-two hours, it was never, never on your website. You go back and check it out.
Look, let me ask you this, can we, let's, what about changing it to electronically? To what, electronically to where they submit their bids, there's none of this, it's sealed, you put it in there?
I was trying to explain, there's a third way that it goes out, but it depends on the bid law. The bid law specifies those thresholds and when it's those thresholds, those go into the bid system. There is an online system that we use to put that out and to submit and to receive the proposals and the bids.
Public bid law is very different, you have very little flexibility in public bid law.
Yeah, central bidding, I can show you just.
We're talking about the RFPs.
Yeah, I could show you just now, like Jefferson Parish, ten thousand dollars. I could email you right now that the bid that I got from them that I was awarded, forty-eight thousand dollars. I didn't have to show my resume, I didn't have to show proof of my employees, all this other stuff. And if you want, I can send it to you right now, you can put it up on there. Same thing, maintenance contracts, maintaining pumps and equipment, I could forward it to you, forty-eight thousand dollars. I didn't have to show my financial statement, I didn't have to tell them anything. All they did was look at my qualification, my license, my qualifications, that was it. I don't have to show no proof of my employee, my bank account. And number one, you're not gonna work on fifty-five generators at a time, how often do they break? And this is what makes me mad, because you asking for all this, how many other companies you ask? The guys is working on your pump now, show me where you got his employees at. Show me where you got all this information on him, that's what I wanna see. And it's frustrating, because if I wouldn't have never told her that I do generators, that whole thing would have never changed, it kept on rolling like it did before, that needs to stop.
Actually, we had a lot of issues with Hurricane Ida and we had a lot of issues with generator maintenance over the years that, that propagated that change, so.
So.
I understand that there were concerns about how that was written and that can all be taken into advisement. We can look at it next time and revise it again.
This is what I don't understand, so if you had a problem with this company that did your maintenance before, why did you choose the same company again?
Because we didn't specify the same requirements. The requirements were that they only had to do one preventative maintenance a year instead of three minor and one major. And so we are increasing what we're doing as a commitment to our preventative maintenance program.
It's still preventative maintenance, ain't nothing changed, but you coming out two more times.
We're doing it more often.
Exactly, you're coming out two more times. So that requires me to give you a resume of all my employees and, uh, my financial statement and, uh, uh, my dependents and people that I worked for for three years?
I understand that you're frustrated.
And then you take, then you, then you take the minority paper clean out. If I see that happen, you know what that means? Look, I'm, I'm limiting your possibilities to even think about this job. That's my point I want you to see.
Yeah, we, we have a issue, uh, fellas.
Oh, wow, wow, but moving, going back, it's nothing you can do, right? Cause I know those job are not gonna be rebid, they already said that. But moving forward, that's when you need to come out with a solution, guys. And the solution is, make the contractors that are bidding this job come to this meeting and they witness their own self when this package is getting opened and you not gonna have this problem. You need advice, call me. I do this every day though, I deal with adjusters, I deal with engineers, I deal with insurance every day. And this, it's easy and there's only one way to do it and it's doing it fair and honest. Thank you.
Thank you.
We speak about fairness and honesty, if you hear every word that we say, we want visibility when you opening these packages up. I don't wanna just be sitting there and you open the main envelope and then you put it to the side, then you go back and you go do your thing. That ain't the way it work. I wanna see some numbers. You show me the numbers, hey, I wouldn't even be here. But I could tell you, Arco is not gonna do that job for no sixty-five thousand dollars. I know that, because what they did three years ago, it was twenty-seven thou, twenty-eight thousand dollars. So you done added three, five, four more generators and then you gonna do it for less than price? Something don't add up.
Well, let me tell you how it works, sir, they not gonna tell you. What they do is, they put that price there and when the man come out and work, he get paid again. And he don't have to, he don't have to submit another bid, cause guess what? That's what been taking place all the while and everybody been keeping their eyes closed like they don't know. But see by the city councilman, not getting a financial report? We don't know if the city got a million dollars in it or twenty million dollars, cause guess what? I can't tell you last time we ever saw a financial report.
See, this is what I wanna talk about. See, she said, oh, that's for the maintenance, that's for the service too. Now, if you go look back at RFP, that ain't got nothing to do with the repairs, repairs is a different thing. Maintenance is maintaining the equipment. Now, if they got a repair and if it's something bigger than me, all I gotta do is make one phone call to Generac. I don't keep, I got some parts I keep at home, but I don't know what all parts gonna break. But I could make a phone call, look, and I could have a report, I could overnight it and have it by my house. So don't try to sit here and confuse people when you know a preventative maintenance contract is something totally different from a repair. They don't mix, you can't mix the two. My people that I work with in Jefferson Parish, I called them and they called me, ain't nobody from Hammond call, but I got my point system add up, I got three hundred and four, that's the first time I ever see it. How is that's gonna benefit me?
Where your points is?
Well, yeah, where's my points? Where were my points, how'd she figure my points up and she never called none of my references? My references calling me saying, well, David, uh, we was waiting on them to call, but they never called. That's how much Jefferson Parish love me, they love what I do. They love when I go there and clean their machines up and keep them running. But I cannot get work in my own city. Cannot get work, they put all this together to keep me from even having an opportunity to work in my city.
Hey, I'm about to wrap it up, but look, it's disheartening, the whole process. And look, he's a minority man and he's getting the shaft, I'm an old white gringo and I'm getting a shaft. That's how I feel about it. And we're about to bring, we're about to bring a two million dollars in equipment right here, you could walk to it. And, and to hear the fire chief, I know he was out of his league, to say, oh, it's a complicated panel and this company's the only one that can do it. You need to see what we got, what we're about to bring in. We do it in an all, but we're moving it all here. And you know what's ironic? The winning bid, they buy stuff from us, me and him. They're buying from us, they're buying material from us.
Man, we appreciate all y'all time, no, David, no, no.
I want one more thing, that Chevy pumps, I, I wanna know that Chevy pumps, I wanna know what the status is. If y'all could give me the status, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I wanna see the status on it. Where are we at? Because I noticed a dindem out there that added some more money to make that happen.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, I. Yeah, all, all I was, you know, all I was gonna say was, I, I wanna, I wanna thank Joey, Mayu and Keith. Uh, they're doing a really good job over there right now with the code enforcement. I'm, I'm very glad to see some improvement in my district, I'm speaking about my district, I'm sure they all over the city, but I, I've had some, some, you know, pretty big improvements, but a lot, you know, still got a long road to go. But I'm, I'm very pleased that, you know, the motivation and work ethic and I'm, I'm glad to see that, that's improving in, in some hot spots. Garbage cans, I'm having some issues right now with the garbage cans, old cans. I was never told anything about it, district wasn't told anything about it, they've been using the old cans, it's not Waste, Waste Pro's cans. They've been using them, like the residents have used them for years and aren't, and then they're just taking them and throwing them away in the cans and so nobody's told them anything about it. Then they said they were instructed to do that, but I think if they were instructed to do that, they should have let the people know what was going on because they're throwing these.
That was not supposed to happen.
But they doing it as a, I know that other one.
Lori already made the complaint today, as soon as she saw it on the Villa West Facebook page. And Wayne Lieber from Waste Pro is already addressing that situation.
Well, this is where I have a problem with it, two weeks, three week, four weeks ago, I got enough from a different district, I got another resident, send me the video, everything else, up the can, up and. I notify them directly about the issue, took them about, you know, a month or two to give them another can that was thrown away, but they using it. So there was, that, they were notified then of that issue. Therefore, I don't understand how it happened, again, and that happened in my district, but they're like, then they were told that. So I don't even know where that came about, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't even understand that, but we definitely need to make sure that, cause they already knew about it four weeks ago and they did it again this week somewhere else. So we need to make sure that they are completely one hundred percent aware of it because I'm sure whoever was high up knew about it four or five weeks ago, cause they had to get the guy another can in a different district.
I know that they sent in writing and today, they're a hundred percent aware of what they should and should not be doing.
Okay, and then they still got a lot of storm debris in there in, in Villa West from that little windstorm that came through there, sitting out, you know, in the, a lot of people's driveways out there in the front and, you know, walkways. I, I really would like to see some passes through there as much as we can to help them get back to after that, that storm with either city or, or garbage company or whatnot to try to get that cleaned up a little bit over there, because they're gonna need some extra pass through. Let's see, one other thing, utility communication, we had a lot of utility communication lines down throughout the city still and have an issue, so I really want next meeting or sometime, I wanna update on what are we doing administration wise to get this improved throughout the city as in making it aware to the people that it's the public commission service that, that governs this and he needs to be notified. If we have to send a message to his office as administration to come sit here and talk to the city council meeting, then we need to have that done, because I'm tired of getting the same calls about the same thing. And it's no, they, they don't care and that's not acceptable. As in they letting these lines just hang in all over the place in Hammond and just wrap them all over and they don't do anything until they disconnect service and we shouldn't have to continue, continue. I shouldn't, y'all shouldn't, somebody needs to come down here and talk to the council and see why is this happening with AT&T, Spectrum and all the communication companies. I wanna see this improved, cause it's continuing doing the same thing. And if we had something electronically on a website, then maybe the people could just go to the website to report the address and where it's at. Maybe if they had a hundred reports, y'all could easily just send that into the, to the public commissions and say, listen, this has been out for a year now, the same report of the same communication line. So I wanna see some improvement of that, that, that's been a pretty big deal. And as far as the sidewalks, I'm gonna bring this up too, cause it's been a while. The sidewalks in Lincoln Park area, they've had that budgeted, the money sent for sidewalks. Where, what are we doing right now and with that, that budget right now with, with those sidewalks? Okay, well, I've been hearing this a lot now, so I'd like to get something next week or so, the money's sitting there. So I sent an email, no response to the administration, so several weeks back, so. So I sent an email, no response to the administration, so several weeks back. So I'd like to get some update on that. I know you looking at me, you look pissed off, but I'm just letting you know. Okay. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you. And I'd like to get a response, some update on that. Can I, can I get that, mayor? Okay. Just wanna make sure.
Just wanna say, uh, thank you, uh, the mayor, the administration. They took the fence down in Moni Park. And they started on a new fence. So I just wanna say thank you for moving forward on that. That's it. I done said enough.
Can you get a motion to adjourn?